Hi, Mary. Yay, thank you.
It's Helen, can you hear me?
Great.
Hey, I just wanted to make sure that you've got your screen set for your best viewing ability. So if you look at the upper right-hand corner, you have an option of different views. Grid view, active speaker and thumbnail, active speaker video. If you do active speaker and thumbnail, you can lock it that you'll be able to always see the dyad.
Ah.
So click active speaker and thumbnail, and then you'll see a little pushpin that you can click, and that will get you out of our grid view.
Okay, I'm on active speaker and thumbnail video view. I clicked on it. What should happen, Helen?
So are you seeing the boardroom?
I am seeing the boardroom. Well, you're, I'm seeing you.
Right. So up in the center of the, of the screen that you see me, there should be a little pushpin.
Oh, got it, got it.
Click on me because you don't want to lock me in.
Okay. You, got it.
When the boardroom pops up, when they start speaking, click on that pushpin, it'll turn blue, and then you will always see the board dyad.
Oh, that's terrific. Okay, um, I gotta tell you, I can, okay, it looks like I can see, I can see Jenny now. I couldn't see Jenny before, so this is good.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, this is, this is a much better view. I can actually, I couldn't see them at all. I couldn't even see bodies last time, so this is really much better. Thank you very much.
Excellent, and when you, when you, when you click that pushpin, that'll lock them, and then you can, that will keep them as your largest view the entire time.
Great, 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 okay, okay. Yeah, I can actually see that they're wearing masks. I'm not kidding, this is the first time I've seen them wearing masks. Okay.
Now we get to see you without your mask.
Thanks to you and thanks to David too, I really appreciate it.
Yep, David and Ina did all the work, thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
Great, well then with that, we are going to call this meeting, the study session, to order. It's 5:08, nine-ish, on this beautiful November 24th, and we're glad to have everyone here. And we'll begin this meeting by me reading a lengthy introduction, but if you hang in there, it may answer some questions that you are curious about. So again, I welcome and thank you for joining us at our modified in-person study session. In accordance with our district health and safety regulations, all individuals in attendance are required to wear a face covering for the duration of the meeting. The room is arranged to maximize the number of public attendees while following public safety guidelines, guidelines, and some members of the governing board and district leadership team are joining us via WebEx video conference. That would be Mrs. Sears and Mrs. Hutchinson are doing that, they are WebEx this evening. As has been our longtime practice, this meeting is being live streamed on the district YouTube channel and can be accessed on our website at MPSAZ.org/live. A recording will be available on YouTube within 24 hours of the conclusion of the meeting. Viewers may select their preferred language for subtitles on the recording. Individuals with disabilities who need accommodations to attend a governing board study session or individuals requesting language interpretation should contact Martha Head, Assistant to the Governing Board, as far in advance as possible at phone number 480-472-0201, or through email at M E H E A D at MPSAZ.org. Community members who would like to contact the governing board may do so through email or phone. We encourage you to contact us prior to our meeting so we can have the opportunity to consider your input. Our contact information may be found at MPSAZ.org/govboard. Thank you for joining us this evening. And with that, we will begin our study session with Dr. Forliss, and the topic tonight is going to be equity.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board, and I know that we are waiting for Mrs. Sears to join us via WebEx, so we'll be watching for her as well. I am going to walk you through kind of a rearview mirror of where we've been in the work of equity, and then also look through the windshield of where we're going. But this takes a huge team to be able to make this, this equity goal work, so you will see that tonight we have Dr. Amy Cram, Principal of Red Bird Elementary, that will be joining us, and she'll be jumping into the presentation along with Jennifer Echols, our Director of MDOP and Personalized Learning, Leilani Scott from our Student Services Division, as well as Patrick Bass, who is an Assistant Principal at Dobson High School, and Lisa Cannon, Principal at Falcon Hill Elementary. So we will be jumping in and out of the presentation because we have divided this very large goal into subsets that we've been working collaboratively on. So with that, we will get started. Ina will pull up the presentation. So let's get started with where have we been. Equity is not a brand-new conversation in Mesa Public Schools. This is something that has been going on for quite some time, so I'm going to enter the conversation in 2017. And in 2017, our governing board adopted the Mesa Public School Promise. This serves as the foundation for equity, that every student in Mesa Public Schools is known by name, served by strength and need, and graduates ready for college, career, and community. And of that entire phrase, I think what is most important is that word "every." When we're talking about equity, we're talking about creating opportunities for every one of our students. In 2018, we began a strategic planning process, and we began that process with designing, what would it look like if we fulfilled our promise? What would the graduate of Mesa Public Schools be like and know in order to fulfill our promise? So you will see, this is the portrait of the graduate, right below the feet of this graduate in a blue gown, you will see the words of ethical, inclusive, and resilient. Those are our three essential attitudes, as well as a combination of six high-priority skills for us, that the portrait of the graduate will know and be like, and be able to do. It was an extensive process where we spoke to thousands of people over the course of over almost eight months, gathering this information, and this is where we landed. So this portrait of the graduate talks about what would it look like to fulfill our promise. As we move on, I want to just highlight that, that essential attitude of inclusive. That is an important attitude in our portrait of a graduate, and it's critical to the work that we're doing with equity. As we have defined, did I click along here? As I click along, the governing board had quite a bit of conversation around the words that landed into that portrait of a graduate. And when we look at inclusive, I don't know why it's not going in front of you. There we go, thank you, David. It takes a team. All right, back one, David. All right, inclusive is, as we wordsmithed quite a bit as this governing board took a look at this attitude, and we settled on language that reads "finds common ground, invites and seeks to understand the ideas of others, and sees strength and differences." That is a critical attitude that will guide our work through our ensure equity goal. Moving on, through the strategic planning process, we know that we have this aspiration of our Mesa Public School Promise. We have defined the portrait of the graduate, then we had to ask ourselves, what are the goals that we need to be focused on in order to realize the promise as well as the portrait of the graduate? So you will see here five goals. We believe that if we align our resources, engage our community, ignite a culture of learning and well-being, and ensure equity, we will achieve college, career, and community readiness. So that is that full circus, full circle back to our promise. So moving on to the next slide, I'm going to just highlight ensure equity. So when I think of those five goals, and we just focus in tonight on ensure equity, the definition that we have crafted through the strategic planning process was, we provide equitable access to opportunities, resources, and support, so all learners can engage in and contribute to meaningful learning. And again, those very inclusive, the very inclusive words of all, all of our learners that we are focused on. And on to that next slide. So I've walked you through the portion up to strategic planning. So we've got this foundation, we've set the table, we have the promise, we have the portrait of a graduate, and we have our strategic goals. So now let's walk through our most recent timeline. In March of 2020, an executive order closed schools across Arizona, and during school closure, there was a bright spotlight on the inequities that were related to access and opportunity. We had defined that access and opportunity was important to us, and so now we're understanding the realities of lack of access to technology, lack of access to safe and reliable internet, lack of access to food stability, lack of access to the much-needed social services for some of our children and families. So we, that was a heightened sense bubbled up around this idea of ensuring equity, and so we had very big conversations around what does that mean? In May of 2020, the death of George Floyd happened, which shined another spotlight on racial unrest in America. And on June 4th, Mesa Public Schools sent out a community message around our stance, and I think what's really important here is acknowledging that we know that there's work to be done around equity in Mesa Public Schools, and that we embrace our responsibility and our role to provide inclusion, belonging, and justice. So again, that sets a stage for us around the importance of our role as a public school system in ensuring equity for our community. Then moving on, as the newly hired superintendent for Mesa Public Schools, one of my first activities was conducting virtual listening sessions with principals, and I asked questions of our principals. As we move into the 2020-21 school year, what is the most important work that we need to be doing? And so I collected all of the data that they shared with me, and the three themes that rose to the top was, we must focus on the portrait of the graduate, those essential attitudes and skills, we must focus on equity, and we have to focus on the well-being of our staff and our students. So this has been the foundation for the work that is now, you will see, became pay-for-performance. So when we're talking about what do we need to pay attention to, you will see that this has been realized in some of our formalized systems within Mesa Public Schools. So now we have to ask ourselves the question. So spring comes around, and we've got this goal of ensuring equity. We know that there's a heightened sense of urgency around the work because of conversations that are happening across the nation, and the question becomes, how will we know that we get there? How will we know that we're ensuring equity within the goal and those strategies that we've talked about? So we had a group that we fondly call the KPI Work Group, Key Performance Indicator Work Group, that came together to draft what these KPIs look like to measure our progress. They fall into three categories. What do our instructional practices look like with this high level of importance on instructional equity for our children? Looking at a culture of equity and professional learning, how will we build a culture that asks great questions to ensure that all kids are getting what they need? And then taking a look at our disciplinary policy and practices? And then equitable systems, what does equity look like through the lens of funding, through human resources, the enrollment of our students, and so on? So I think it's important that, I want to emphasize that this ensure equity goal is a very broad goal that encompasses multiple facets of equity within our school system. So I am going to turn this over to Jennifer Echols and Amy Cram, who are going to represent this work group and the work that they did. All you need to do is say next, and I'll click, and so will David. All right, we're getting this down, David. All right.
Thank you. So as Dr. Forliss mentioned, in this
Turn your microphone on.
Not a girl. There we go.
Amy, now? I felt like Dr. Driscoll there for a minute.
Can't hear you.
The events in the spring really shone a light on some issues or some inequities that we had within our system, and we had school leaders and other people in our system stepping up and saying, I want to be a part of the solution. I want to help make these, make things better for our students and for our employees in Mesa Public Schools. And so the Strategic Planning Committee capitalized on that interest and asked some of those school leaders if they would help us develop the key performance indicators around the equity goal. We also had some teachers and an instructional coach who had been heavily involved in equity work in the district that we invited to help with that process. And we were led in that work by Dr. Katie Fodchuk from ALP, the consultant group that's been helping with the strategic planning process, and Dr. Robert Carlyle, our wonderful Director of Research for Mesa Public Schools. And we started out meeting as a full group, and we needed to do some level-setting around language and making sure that we had an understanding of what is a key performance indicator, and what are some key concepts related to key performance indicators. So some of those conversations were around understanding leading and lagging indicators and different data points that we might be looking at to help us understand equity in our system. And once we did that, we broke up into the subgroups that Dr. Forliss referenced earlier, instructional practices, culture of equity and professional learning, and equitable systems. And in those subgroups, we took a deeper dive into some different data points that we might consider. We also started by thinking about our current reality. What is the current state of equity within each of these subgroups, and what are we already doing well? And then we went through some visioning to think about what would it look like in our schools if we had achieved our goals around equity? And then we started talking about what are the strategies that we need to employ to bridge the gap between those two things, between the current reality and where we wanted to be. So out of all of those conversations, we ended up with a draft of our key performance indicators. And I'm going to share a couple of them with you in just a minute and talk about what they might look like. But before I do that, I'm going to ask Dr. Cram if she wants to share anything about the process of the development.
I would just add that it was, it was a great opportunity to see how many of the leaders and educators across the district came together to have these conversations and to volunteer their time because it was important to them, and the conversations that took place were, were just valuable. They, they, it looks different at different schools with different communities, and it's nice to see that we have so many people committed to this work.
Thank you, Dr. Forliss, thank you. Oops. Oh, that's the right one, sorry. Okay, so this is, I was privileged to be a part of the instructional practices subgroup, and this, we had some great conversations about things that were connected to equity in terms of instructional practices. And below that heading, you'll see an example of a KPI that was developed related to instructional practices. It says that students enrolled in gifted programs and higher-level courses, K-12, will be proportionately representative of the diversity of students attending the Mesa Public Schools. So that's the key performance indicator that was developed. On the right side of that slide, you see some graphs that represent some data points that we might collect related to this KPI. And so there are numbers that might be hard to see, but across the bottom, it shows the different ethnic or racial groups in Mesa, and then on the left side, it has some numbers. But the easiest way to interpret these graphs is that the goal would be for them to be all blue, because the blue represents enrollment in AP and honors courses at the high school level. The orange blocks represent the missing students, and so when we have those bars solidly blue, it will mean that we have achieved at the high school level that goal of having proportionally representative of the diversity of students in the Mesa Public Schools. And next slide, please. This is another data point that we might collect related to this key performance indicator. This is showing enrollment in gifted and talented courses at the elementary level, and there are two different data, sets of data in this slide. The top one is referencing enrollment by race or ethnicity, and the bottom is representing enrollment by free and reduced lunch. And so you, again, hard to see, but across the bottom are some numbers that represent the school years, and then the lines are very subtle, but the lines are shifting a little bit based on the school year, so they're not necessarily straight across. But again, the goal would be, because the graphs on the left represent the current enrollment by free and reduced lunch or by ethnicity or race, the graphs on the right represent total enrollment in Mesa Public Schools. So our goal would be to have those color blocks be equal in both sets of graphs. And that, those are some examples of how we might start thinking about equity in terms of our instructional practices. And these would be examples of some leading indicators that let us know that we're on our, moving in the right direction towards our goal, that we're looking at who we have enrolled in these higher-level courses. And I'm going to turn it over to Amy to talk about our next two slides.
So taking a look at a sample of a key performance indicator for equitable systems, this is focusing on human resources, and it states that diversity of teaching classified and administrative staff will significantly increase to more closely represent the diversity of students in surrounding Mesa community. So if you take a look at these graphs, again, it's kind of hard to see, but the bottom graph is showing the students enrolled by race and ethnicity across Mesa Public Schools, and the top graph is showing you race and ethnicity of our staff, and it kind of varies by position, whether classified, teaching staff, et cetera. So what we would hope to find, and when we know we have met our goal, is when these are mirroring one another, so that our students enrolled in our community, I mean, I'm sorry, the students that are enrolled in our schools are, are in a community of educators and staff that mirror them, and so that is when we know that we would have achieved that goal. Moving on to the next slide, would give us a sample of the KPI for culture of equity. This is focused on disciplinary policy and practices, and it states that rates of student disciplinary referrals and consequences, K-12, indicate no significant differences across identity groups. That's when we know that we've arrived. If you take a look at this graph here, this graph is, has broken up different types of discipline incidences by race and ethnicity. So in order, if we've met our goal, you're going to take a look at a graph that shows all of these are equal across, across the board. I mean, we hope to decrease them, but our, most importantly, is that they're equal.
So those are just some examples of KPIs that were developed by the work group. Right now, the scorecard is considered a draft because there are more KPIs than I think we might want to include in our, after we've developed KPIs for all of our goals, we want to make sure that we've prioritized those that are the most important, so that the work is achievable for us. And so the next round that we need to do with these KPIs is take it out to a larger group of stakeholders to help us prioritize and select those that we really want to hold on to for the future.
Thank you very much. So we're going to continue on, David, or we're ready to click to the next one. So now I'm going to bring you into June, and in June, you heard, you heard Jennifer reference ALP, that's Advanced Learning Partnerships. Many of you see Amos Fodchuk as a familiar face that worked with us with strategic planning, as well as Doug Fisher, who is working with us on our instructional model, our instructional framework. And these two national thought leaders came into our Leadership Academy and led conversations from two different perspectives around equity. One of them was, both of them focusing on instruction, but Amos focused a whole lot on that portrait of a graduate and those portrait of the graduate look for. So what does it look like when we create equitable opportunities for all of our kids? And then Dr. Fisher talking about equitable access to high-quality instruction. Then moving on, in late June, early July, Dr. Cannon and Patrick Bass raised their hands and jumped at the same time to step forward to say, I want to be a part of this work. So as Dr. Cram mentioned, there was a lot of grassroots momentum of leaders saying, I want to be a part of this. And so Dr. Cannon and Mr. Bass and I had a good conversation, and they submitted a proposal for professional learning to lead the work of equity, the discussions of equity within our leadership teams across our district. So at our Leadership Academy, they conducted professional learning at our General Administrator Meeting, and they have quickly become the co-chairs of our Equity Task Force. And so they are going to talk for just a bit about what their work is looking like in just a moment. So the next slide I'm going to take you to is the Governing Board Action. So in August of 2020, the Governing Board approved our Pay-for-Performance Plan, which was to support our, two of our strategic goals. One of them was to ensure equity, the other is ignite a culture of learning and well-being that Dr. Isles will talk about later this evening. So through pay-for-performance, here are some questions on the right that we are focusing on. Where am I personally? Where do I feel that I fit in this work? Because we know that it is not a one-size-fits-all approach, it needs to personally resonate with the work that I do as an educator in Mesa Public Schools. And then do we understand and how do we use inclusive language? And so that was the development of a glossary of equity terms. What do these terms mean? Many of the terms were comfortable for some, foreign to others, so this was an opportunity for us to build shared language. Where are we as a team, and what are our immediate community needs? So those were listening sessions that were conducted by Dr. Cannon and Mr. Bass, as well as members of the Equity Task Force. I think they will tell you stories of the 150 listening sessions that they have conducted with department leaders, as well as principals and school leadership teams. So after this listening session and some data is gathered and there's a conversation, the next question becomes, so now where do we want to go as a team? And so I know that I am part of the seventh-floor leadership team, and our goal is very specific to where we are and what our work is. The goals at a particular, at an elementary school could look very different than at a high school, so they're very specific to the needs of that particular work group. And then at the end will be our reflection. So how did we do? What do we need to do more of, and where can we celebrate some of our victories? So on to the next slide. I'd like to ask for Dr. Cannon and Mr. Bass to have conversations about the stories of the work and what they're learning, and a high-level overview to share with you as a governing board in the community around how we're progressing in this goal.
My on?
You're on, perfect.
I used to. Okay, so I think what's been, first off, thank you for having us here. I think that when we started this back in the summer, we would have never imagined we'd be sitting here right now, so thank you. More importantly than us being here is the fact that the work is getting done, and that is something that is, it's encouraging. In my years of an educator, I've never seen it, I've never seen it come to fruition, so to see it now living and breathing is, is touching. So I feel honored to be around some transformative leaders, and with that being said, Dr. Cannon and I, and eight others, got together and said, hey, what does this look like? We were able to sit on the National Equity Project, Leading for Equity Institute, and they have a model that is very much like what we've done. It's see, engage, and act. And essentially, this is about first doing exactly what you said, Dr. Forliss, and doing some of the self-work, right? Getting introspective and saying, okay, where am I at with things? And then deciding, okay, moving into this engaged domain of how do I show up to do the work, and am I best equipped to do the work? And so we started creating really solid containers, really safe spaces for leaders all across the district to start to unpack where they were, to think about where they might be on the continuum, on our ensure equity continuum, and how to move the needle forward. This was no easy undertaking. It was a heavy lift, because to have to get introspective and reflect on some practices that you may be exercising that are not exactly the most equitable is tough. It's very, very challenging. So we had to be strategic and operate with some finesse, and pace with patience, right? And make sure that we had some hypersensitivities where people were, because we knew that it could go south if we started to make it some indictment or imputation of how people are leading to do the work in Mesa Public Schools. So we tried our best, we are no experts, we're still learning, and as we get to go to more conferences, logistically, we understand how to do this where we can package it where it's even smoother and it's more seamless than what it's been. But we're really proud of our, of our teams, whether at the district level or at the site level, and how people are starting to enact some real change. So for example, we know that some of our sites have already led dyads and trios where they're doing the very same thing we did in the listening session, where they're doing the social the social identity wheel, or they're creating some sort of an exercise for folks to sort of find an entry point into what it means to be inclusive and equitable. So I don't want to hog the mic. I know I'm hijacking the space, Dr. Cannon, so I'll, I'll let you share your piece, too.
I think the, can you hear me? Oh, it's not on. Did I have it? Okay. One of the stories, like, when I think of stories of the work, I want to share some of the themes that came out, because I think those were important. For one, people had an opportunity, leaders and leadership teams across the district had an opportunity to engage in conversations that they may not have engaged in before, that they hadn't really had a space or a process to engage in those conversations. And that was really important. And so from that, we heard things like, I had not thought about that, or this is something we've never discussed. I wonder. So a lot of wonders came out about that. And I think when we think about the work, you know, that Jennifer did, and that Amy has done, and we know that Leilani is going to be sharing about, it's bridging those, those conversations. We talked about gaps, but the gap has been the discussion gap and the listening gap, where we can sit in a space and listen to one another and understand where we're at. And so the primary plan of this was to be participatory and to give an opportunity for leaders to engage in a participatory process about topics that are not always easy to discuss. And as a result of that, be able to engage and work from where they're at. And where we know they're at now is, we get emails, both of us, I'm sure several of us, constantly about, I'm looking for information on this. I want to have a discussion with my staff on this. Where do you know we could get more resources? So there is a desire and a yearning in our district from our leaders, as well as our, rest of our employees, to do this work. It's just up to us to make sure that we're creating the space, continuing to create the space, to allow them to guide an awareness, and then looking at our data. So I think the, that's the next piece for us, is really digging into some data. The data that's all we have, there's an extensive amount. And Dr. Carlisle, who's not here, is he on? Nope, he's not here. He has been instrumental, I know, in our work as well, in terms of creating a survey where teams could really look at themselves as a leadership team and look at what their needs were in terms of developing their own capacity to lead and facilitate these conversations.
So moving on, I think it's important sometimes we learn about what it is. So we've talked a lot about the what it is that we're doing in Mesa Public Schools, but I think it's also important to talk about what it isn't. And you've heard some of this language this afternoon. So it is important to us that our Ensure Equity goal is based on self-awareness, where we are, where we're comfortable, and then how we move forward. Because what it is not is judgmental or indicting. It's creating conditions for inclusivity, making sure that voices are invited to the table and listened to. And it's not designed to alienate or to be divisive. That's the last thing we need at our, in our district, let alone our country, right now. It is building on a common knowledge of topics that are pervasive among educators across America. It's pretty difficult to open up an ed week or any type of a journal related to education without seeing a headline connected to educational equity. So we know that we are part of the language, and we're part of this movement that is part of what our profession is. It is not a one-size-fits-all approach. We know that will not happen. It's collective and participatory, employees and community linking as thought partners together. I'm going to share a little bit more about that for you as well. It's not a curriculum. It's not a curriculum for staff, and it's not a curriculum for our students. This is about understanding where we are and how we get better together to be more inclusive for our children. And it is customized. Patrick and I giggle because I steal his phrase all the time that says we need to pace with patience. We've got to take people where they are, where they're comfortable, and move ahead. It is not narrowly focused on one idea, one theory, or one thought. It's not jumping all into that same bucket. It's about having a plethora of ideas around how we go about the work. And it is, what it is, is boosting equitable experiences for our community. And we say that largely, that we want to make sure that Mesa Public Schools is a place that can engage in conversations and then build our practices to be incredibly inclusive and equitable. And it's not about politics, and it's not about censorship. There's been some emails that we've had back and forth that say, why are you jumped into this political game? That's not our angle. Our angle is around making a better, more just community. So as we move forward, where are we going? So I gave you the rearview where we've been. Now we're going to keep chugging along. So where are we going to go? We're looking through that windshield. And our next steps are, we will have, we are mobilizing a Discipline Practices Task Force that will be led by Leilani Scott. She's going to talk about that for a moment. We have a plethora of data that is related to discipline, and we are going to, they're going to take a deep dive into that. And the outcome will be recommendations to modify our current practices and systems. So Leilani, would you like to speak a bit about that when you're going to launch and what this looks like coming up?
Last week, a group of 45 district individuals met for our very first Discipline Task Force meeting. And so as you saw previously in a slide that Amy discussed around the discipline data, historically, we have discipline data that mirrors discipline data across the country around disproportionality in regards to discipline, specifically exclusionary discipline practices. And that's defined as going into detention, short and long-term suspensions, and/or expulsions, ALCs, which we have within our district. And historically, over time, we've seen a great number of students who may represent a small number of the district community, who have an abundance of discipline actions and violations. And so, for example, in the previous data, we saw that our Black African-American students represented the majority of our referrals. And historically, in Mesa Public Schools, they've only represented 3% to 4% of our population. So based on just initial glance, it would look like our Black African-American students, although 4% of our population, are three to four times more likely to have an exclusionary discipline action. So we also know that the more often that they are disciplined and out of school, the less opportunities they have to learn, right? And be able to really achieve that portrait of a graduate. So the intent of this Discipline Task Force is just to really dig deep into our data, analyze what we, analyze the trends. We're looking at, right now, just a three-year trend lined in our data. And we want to be able to make recommendations that will support systems, procedures, and practices to ensure discipline equity across all of Mesa Public Schools. And that is going to look, we're going to be looking at, do we need to have clear standards of discipline practice for the adults in our district? Do we need to revise the standards, our information and guidelines, and improve and clarify our student code of conduct for Mesa Public Schools? And then we're also going to dive into our policy and how it relates to previous policy, looking at, do we need to increase or add additional policy around discipline equity, and make sure that aligns with our statutes for the state? And make those recommendations, and then provide an implementation plan if the district chooses to move forward with those recommendations.
I think you've got a robust group of 45 people that are very interested in jumping in. So again, this is, the breadth and depth of those who want to be engaged in this work continues to expand. And then on November 17th, our Associate Superintendent Holly Williams and I had the opportunity to kick off our Equity Advisory Council. That was our first meeting of four. We will be meeting quarterly throughout the year. And this is a group, there are 20 of us. There are community members, high school students, district leaders, and a teacher who are part of this group, who will be meeting quarterly. And we want to expand our thought partnership around the work of equity and inclusion. So we are going to discuss challenges and opportunities that we see in Mesa Public Schools, as well as the community, and how do we come together to, to find creative solutions, share knowledge and resources, share networks and build capacity amongst us. We believe that we're stronger together. And then serve as a sounding board for ideas. I spend a lot of my time looking at educational research. I need to broaden my capacity and my understanding from those who are knee-deep in the work through a different, through other lenses, and then provide feedback and recommendations to one another. So that was a pretty exciting evening. It was great to see everybody virtually on this, on this council, and we expect, we have very high hopes for the work that will be done. And again, you're hearing layers of different leadership groups that are coming together. It's kind of this check and balance. I also see this Equity Advisory Council is the one that really helps us to stay true to our word of being collaborative within our community to create a more inclusive community throughout Mesa. So with that, and I think we've got 10 minutes left, we do have a, we do have an email address, equity@mpsaz.org. So if somebody is very interested in this work, certainly can email directly there, and we will vet that email address. And we began with a promise, and we will end with a promise, because that is the core of why we do what we do at Mesa Public Schools, is to ensure that every student is known by name and need, served by strength, known by name and need and served by strength, so that they can achieve college, career, and community. So we're excited to be able to answer all of the questions that come our way. We've got a great panel here this evening.
I appreciate the presentation and the work. I'd like some examples of what some of the schools and sites are doing, how it's looking, you know, boots on the ground. Like, I feel like we've talked a lot about theory and kind of where we're going and what the process they went through, but I'd love to hear what it's looked like in translation.
I can speak from a couple of examples of schools. Amy, I know you have one as well. At a couple of sites, including my site, we have focus narrowed in on a specific area on the Ensure Equity Framework that we are focusing on. And so ours is really about professional learning. We felt as the leadership team decided that, based on our data, professional learning is really where we needed to begin. And so if you are familiar with that Ensure Equity Framework, that is really about baselining terms and, and understanding and getting to know, understand some of the terms around equity, including some of the terms about racial equity, which are some of the, which are the more difficult terms in our settings. And so to discuss. And so, right now, I have a task force, a team. I own our own team at our school, and several other schools are doing the same thing, where we are taking, we have created, there's been a collaborative effort to create an equity glossary that is, and within that is embedded books and podcasts and anything we find or people are sending to us that really helps with guiding questions, that helps teams. So each, each time I, we meet and, are meeting in small groups at my school, and so we tackle a particular term. With that, we're exposing our team to what that means, what it is, what it isn't, having discussions around that, and really thinking about how that impacts us as we, when we show up, and also our students and our community members. So for some schools and departments, they're really focusing on the glossary and the terms in that glossary. Others are focusing on topics, and so they're doing book studies, or they're creating a menu of options from the resources we're providing, where the, you know, the adults on campus can really make sure they are becoming knowledgeable about some of these ideas that they may, understanding that they're all in different places, and so they may need to start with terms, or others are starting more with, let's read some literature, or read some other research that's out there. That's a couple of examples. Do you want to go there, Amy?
Sure. So she, she talked a lot of this, but Dr. Cannon and I came together, and we sort of curated a whole thing. So it's not, this isn't a glossary where you look in the back of a book and then you just find the definition. This is a glossary that does indeed include guiding questions, videos, articles. We even have virtual workbooks where people can actually move through exercises to kind of help them move further along on that continuum that we mentioned earlier. And I believe, and Dr. Forless, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that even our superintendency has moved forward quarterly to work through these terms. So like quarter one is intersection, intersectionality and microaggressions. Intersectionality is a term that was coined decades ago by Kimberley Crenshaw, but it represents the wonderful things that all of us bring to the space. And so these are things that many of our colleagues and friends around the district, you know, they probably have an idea of the concept, but now they have the language to put towards this. And so baselining and having that inclusive, shared dialogue was really important. That's where many of our friends across the district are starting as an entry point into the work. Now, like what Dr. Cannon said, some of us are like, okay, we might not just be at this first tier. We may be a little bit further along. And so at my site, at Dobson High School, we've jumped into conversations around race. We've been using a tool called The Compass and the Protocol by Dr. Glenn Singleton. And the book is Courageous Conversations. Again, this is a cornerstone reading and equity work that's been around for a very long time. And so we're using a lot of the framework from that to lead DIASs, trios, breakout sessions. We have teacher leaders who are first adopters that wanted to jump on board, much like what it's looked like for the district, where so many hands were raised, like, hey, I want to help out. And so teachers have jumped on board to help lead those breakout sessions across the district. Again, as we've been getting emails from our friends, we're hearing more and more about the same sort of concept, where people are having these small listening sessions to kind of unpack and begin their gateway into equity, inclusion, diversity.
So if you're, if we use your term see, engage, act, would you say we're more at the see and engage piece? Is that fair? I mean, when we talk about like, like Leilani's, they're going to do a deep dive into data, and then the act part will be after the recommendations are made and people start to follow them. So right now, I would say that our district is, we're all still learning, trying to figure out exactly what, where we are, yeah. But so we're still in those early stages. So maybe this is a question for Dr. Forless. Do you see this kind of goal going multi-years in its, in its part of our Pay for Performance?
Board Member Richardson, I think that that's a really important question. And I'm so glad that you asked it, because as you were talking, I was thinking, oh my goodness, I hope that you all don't think that this is just something we're doing for the 1920, or the 2021 school year. This is something that will live on. And you will also see that throughout the five strategic goals, equity is woven through all of them. So when we're looking at aligning resources, we're looking at, what are those equitable practices of aligning resources? When we're thinking about engaging our community, are we thinking about it through a lens of equity? Are we making sure that we're listening to students? Are we not just to the adults in the organization, for example? So this is a goal that will live on. This is building the foundation this year, but certainly, we will be far from finished in June 30th of 2021. We've got lots of steps to go. Thank you for asking that.
Trying to get a handle on where they were. Did you say you had something to share?
Yes.
Amy? I'd love to hear it.
We, we engaged a lot of the same work that, you know, that Lisa and Patrick have described. But I have to say that it has been, it has been really powerful. And I think that even though we're definitely in the learning stages, there is some action that's, that's being taken as part of these rich discussions. We're taking the same approach where we're, we're really creating a common language. So we're looking at those same, those same terms and making sure that we have a rich understanding and going through guided questions, and this is as a whole staff. Our staff, our, our leadership team also was able to participate in one of the listening sessions. And it was, it was so powerful. It brought our staff together, the people that got to participate. We created a very safe space where people were sharing openly and really thinking about things in a way that they may not have before. And I just have to think that when something that wonderful has occurred, that there's going to be something that happens in that classroom or with a colleague based on that conversation. And then also, there are so many volunteers as a part of this process across the leadership and educators in Mesa. There was such a great interest that we're hearing firsthand, those of us that are on some of these committees, like about the discipline data. So that's something that Leilani has really looked closely at, but I've been hearing about because I'm part of this task force. So at Redbird, we have changed, we went, we did it now. We went ahead and changed the way we look at discipline. So when you're looking at a student that has in-school suspension and may traditionally, across the nation, spend that time in a classroom, you know, separated and doing their work independently, we don't, we're looking at a new model, and we've already started. So we push that child in for their instruction. And, and they work on activities associated with the mistakes that they made to help build tools and skills in them to help them in the future. So even though it's not necessarily, I would say broadly speaking, we are things happening everywhere as a part of this work even now. If that makes sense.
This is Minor, and I had the opportunity to participate in a book study out at Zaharis Elementary as part of this equity, and we read the book Ghost Boys together, and we were having, part of a discussion in a sixth grade classroom, Marcy Ling's classroom. And written across the wall, she has a quote that says, I'm going to probably paraphrase it not very well, but, "When you read a story, throughout the course of the story, the character changes, and so do you." You know, as you watch that journey. And I kept thinking about that quote when you're talking about this, as you're doing these professional developments, you're doing these. So it kind of helps that act part seep into that, to that other part, because you change as you learn and you see, you know better and you do better. And I think that's an impressive part of the study. So good job. Thanks.
That book study that you, that you experienced at Zaharis, those students decided to do a book drive, and, and we're donating books to our school. So that's definitely action. We're receiving boxes and boxes of books from them based on that book. And, and the feelings that the students had as a part of that. So more action.
I know that we have Mrs. Sears and also Mrs. Hutchinson that are joining us remotely if they've got any questions for us.
Yes, I do. Thanks very much, Dr. Forless. I was intrigued by something that Amy Clam said, and that her whole staff is involved in this process. Could you, or any of the other people who are on the task force, talk about how you include classified staff into this process? I know that one of the most important aspects to classified staff to feel a part of the team was the adoption of a portrait of a graduate. And if the goals help us achieve this portrait, how have classified staff been involved in this process? I'd really like to hear some examples of that kind of feedback, what Board Member Richardson asked about.
So I can speak to this a little bit, and I think that the Advisory Council sort of mirrors this exact thing too, but participatory has been the anchor that we keep coming back to, that these, these movements need to be participatory, where it's not just leadership saying, okay, we think equity is a big goal here, so now go do it, and here's a bunch of stuff, now go out and, you know, make it happen. This is something where we need voices at the table, and so I'm really glad that you brought this classified piece, because for too long, we know that there's been this piece of like certified versus classified, and there are stigmas that are attached that certainly needs to be dismantled. And what we've done at Dobson High School is, again, in this breakout session that we've had, this was our entire staff. We, we led these breakout sessions around Courageous Conversations and holding space for high-stakes dialogue around race and racial equity, and we included classified. This wasn't just a teacher PD, this was the entire school, and we even had facilitators that were classified. So we, we had people who were interested in leading the charge for equity inclusion and diversity from all, all different levels in how they serve Mesa Public Schools, and they jumped in, and they were able to help us start the work, begin. So I can only speak for some of that. So maybe that answers some of your question.
Yes, we also, it was an entire staff that is engaging in this work, and classified, you know, they are so important and have such a great impact on our families, on our students, and they have been actively participating in the, in the same activities and opportunities that I described earlier. It's, it's all staff.
Can I just add one more thing too? Is that when we started this with the, the original meeting that took place, GAM, I don't remember when it was, but a GAM meeting, our first GAM, we had all of the directors and leaders, and when the break, the first breakout, those first breakout sessions happened around the two terms we were introducing to our leaders, the intersectionality term really did provoke a lot of conversation. And one of the things that came out of that is exactly what, what Patrick mentioned, was the division, or the feeling of division between classified and certified. So it was powerful in, within leader, the leadership group to be able to hear that conversation start to happen. And then as a result of our Ensure Equity Goal, Pay for Performance Goal, these are school-wide and department goals. So everyone in the district is looking at this, and I think that is, you know, again, we, we watched, and we watched as the governing board approved, and we moved forward with our Pay for Performance that Holly Williams presented, that knowing that this was going to be an opportunity for our entire district, classified, certified, it didn't matter, we all were take, we all were participating in the same, in a focus on the same goal. And so as a result, what you'll see is, I know the custodial department is working on certain things under operations, and, you know, human resources, when we met with human resources, human resources, that department, when we did their listening session, it was mostly classified staff. So there really hasn't been any group left out of this process. At sites, it's a lot larger, but principals are very intentionally planning to include their entire staff, classified and certified.
That's, that's, that's so, it's so good to hear.
Excuse me. Mrs. Minor, Mrs. Hutchinson, this is Helen Hollins. We're going to take a technical pause for a sound check with Mrs. Hutchinson. We're having difficulty in the WebEx, and I understand you also in the live are having difficulty with her audio and a robotic sound. Am I coming across okay? We're trying to determine if it's the full WebEx meeting, or if it's just Mrs. Hutchinson.
It's just Ms. Hutchinson, you're fine.
Okay, thank you. David, can you give Mrs. Hutchinson maybe some directions on adjusting her AirPods?
Either that, or she wants to log off and log back in, try that to connect back to the meeting.
I tried to stop, not use the AirPods.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Mrs. Sears, can you do a check while we're waiting?
Is that better?
Oh, fantastic.
So it's, it's my, I can't use the AirPods then when I'm, when I'm attending the meeting. That sounds like what I need to do.
Well, this, you're, you're much clearer, I think, on both sides right now. Let's pause and have Mrs. Sears do a sound check as well, so we're, we're good to go.
Thank you for checking.
Mrs. Sears, can you just do a little audio for us, so we can ensure we'll be able to hear you? I'm not getting any sound from Mrs. Sears in the WebEx house. Are you at the board?
No, we're not.
Okay, looks like she's putting in some earbuds right now. Again, Mrs. Sears.
Can I be heard now?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so I need to use headphones.
Welcome to the world of technology. Again, I apologize for that pause, but I think we'll have a much better experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mrs. Hutchinson.
The other, the other question that I had, first of all, thank you very much for providing me with some examples of how classified are included, and, and that entire staffs really means entire staffs. This is, this is terrific, because as we know, our classified folks are often very close to our students. And, and, and when they service our students or create the environment for learning, they can be of great help in establishing a culture of equity. The other question that I had is about students and student voices. I know that we have some folks that are on the Advisory Council, two students from Westwood High School, but have we included students in the discussion at school sites, or is that some, is that a step yet to come?
Board Member Hutchinson, that is a step yet to come. Our focus right now is on the adults and our leadership teams, and as we're focusing on our staff. But certainly, we know that, that our students have a lot to say on this topic, so we, we need to harness those voices as we move forward. Also, I think is a good time to share that you heard about the listening sessions that were done this first semester. It's not a one-and-done. They will be coming back for a check-in after we come back in the new year, and then at the end of the year to do some reflection, and also give us some feedback on those key performance indicators. So there's work yet to come through the task force meeting with these 150 groups. But students is definitely part of our future planning for implementation.
Oh, terrific, terrific. Okay, thanks very much.
Mrs. Sears, do you have any questions or comments at this point?
Yeah, I'm, I'm taking in the information, and I talked to Dr. Forless today, and as I listen to the amount of work as being done, and I think about the actual lens of equity, two things come through, and off the top is actually having, when we talk about the pay for performance, which is interactive right now, is the key indicators and knowing more about those and how those are going to be the actual measuring stick for the pay for performance is something that I probably want to know more information about as we continue to develop it. If, you know, with paid for performance being one of the leading components of this, then also just giving further information, how with all the different ways that we are going to look at equity and it being a lens for everything else, broader support for actually this implementation. Because I know we have several people working really hard, and it's spread throughout, but chiefly, and we have two people who are kind of heading it up, and then a committee, but looking at how for this work to be sustained, how we're going to be able to filter it where everything goes from this equity lens to have a continual program. So the first thing, the key indicators, and how those are going to be used when it comes to pay for performance, and also just us thinking about how this is going to be sustainable, like what we're going to do.
Up with that, or do you have a follow-up question, Mrs. Sears?
I'm ready.
They're taking notes here.
Yes, and Mrs. Sears, I, you and I did have a great conversation about this today, and thinking about how do we sustain the momentum of the work, and then how do we hold ourselves accountable to making sure that our systems reflect what we have learned about equity, and not just checking the boxes to say, yes, we completed these tasks for pay for performance, that it becomes part of the way that we do our work. So those are our goals moving forward as well.
So Mrs. Sears, is there any questions also in addition to that before we close the study session?
No, I think we'll, it's more to process than take in.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Peterson, did you have any questions?
It's an interesting topic and how you, especially when you try and draft, looking at your key performance indicators, what do you come up with that effectively measures that or gives us an indication of something that you can measure? I think I struggle with the, the concept of that we have to have proportionate level of students based upon the mix of a background of a case, especially if we're using, you know, our AP courses or our accelerated courses. I'd almost like to have everybody be in that category, and I want us to get in a situation where we start restricting a certain group of students because we want to balance with the others. And so how we measure that and drive that is, is, is challenging, but I certainly applaud the effort to put a focus on it, to do everything we can to make sure that each student has the opportunity. And then perhaps some things that you can do to measure, how are we doing it, getting the connectivity and the computers and different things to all of our students, and areas, maybe something that could be a key performance indicator as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, in light of the time, and we need to take a break so we can start our regular session and let everyone get some dinner that have been here all day, I have, I have questions that I've asked Dr. Forless when we've had our one-on-one meetings. I just wanted to maybe say a last point, and that is, throughout this presentation, I keep hearing inclusive, inclusivity, to be inclusive. And equity to me is inclusive for everyone, and the listening tours have helped you gather information to make those who may be uncomfortable with this topic feel more included and their voices heard. Equity goes on all levels, and everybody has their own definition of equity. And that is always the challenge when you approach this kind of subject, this subject in particular here tonight. And I think that the listening tour has been a wonderful way to start. It made me feel comfortable, a lot more comfortable. When I had people approach me with concerns about this at their school, I would tell them how they need, or talk to them about how there needed to be some listening, and then come to me and talk to me about what you think, because there's first education piece, and then we want your contribution. But we want to get together first and listen to what this really is about and how it applies to all of us, inclusive of all of us. So thank you very much for taking your time and all the work that you have done. I know it has been an incredible amount of work in a very, very disruptive time. So balancing all the things you already have on your plate and to also continue the process, which I know you have been doing, we appreciate. And I know that those who are in Mesa Public Schools will grow to understand and appreciate it even more. So thank you for being here tonight and sharing all this information. And with that, I would like to hear a motion for adjournment.
So moved?
Thank you, a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Richardson, and now the vote. I think we will reconvene at approximately 6:30, as close to 6:30 as we can, as we allow people to go and get a quick bite to eat, and then come back here and be ready for another meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
Before we call the meeting to order, we were going to start with a moment of silence, and then we will call the meeting in order, and then I will begin with the order of things to come. So with that, we will now have a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. Now we will call the meeting to order. It is 6:00, let's see, 6:35 on this November 24th, and we welcome all who are here this evening. We will begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance, and leading our pledge of allegiance this evening is Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Danny O'Brien, after which we will have the Emerson Elementary School Choir sing the National Anthem that was recorded prior to COVID-19. We will then go through the governing board meeting procedures. If all will rise, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I pledge allegiance to the state. Thank you.
Thank you for all of those families that are watching and seeing their cute kids at Emerson Elementary, including one that is sitting here with us. I know your child is probably not in that, but it was fun to watch Emerson. Thank you. We will now go on to the procedures. Welcome and thank you for joining us at our modified in-person governing board meeting. In accordance with our District Health and Safety Regulations, all individuals in attendance are required to wear face covering for the duration of the meeting. The room is arranged to maximize the number of public attendees while following public safety guidelines, and some members of the governing board and district leadership team are joining us via WebEx Video Conference. We have Mrs. Marcy Hutchinson and Mrs. Kiana Sears who are joining us from WebEx. As has been our longtime practice, this meeting is being livestreamed on the district YouTube channel and can be accessed on our website at MPSAZ.org/live. A recording will be available on YouTube within 24 hours of the conclusion of the meeting. Viewers may select their preferred language for subtitles on the recording. Individuals with disabilities who need accommodations to participate in governing board meetings or individuals requesting language interpretation should contact Martha Head, Assistant to the Governing Board, as far in advance as possible at 480-472-0201, or you can email her at M-E-H-E-A-D at MPSAZ.org. For those of you joining us in person, if you would like to address the board on an agenda item, please submit a request, sorry, to address the board located in the lobby. Per governing board policy BDDH, individual speaking time may be adjusted to maximize the number of participants. Community members who would like to contact the governing board may do so through email or phone. We encourage you to contact us prior to our meeting so we have the opportunity to consider your input. Our contact information may be found at MPSAZ.org/govboard, G-O-V-B-O-A-R-D. Thank you for joining us this evening. And with that, we will go to a review of the agenda items, and I am not aware of any changes that need to be made to the agenda, so we will go on to the review of the governing board calendar.
Thank you, President Mayner and members of the board. I'd like to draw your attention to our Thanksgiving holiday that we will soon be sharing, beginning tomorrow, as we do not have school in session on tomorrow, Thursday, or Friday, and also a reminder that November 30th is a remote learning day. We'll talk more about that in our upcoming presentation. Looking ahead into December, it's hard to believe, December is just right around the corner, December 2nd, we have board agenda planning, and then on December 3rd, ASBA's annual conference. Mrs. Hutchinson, Mrs. Richardson, and Mrs. Sears will attend this conference. Mrs. Hutchinson is the delegate, Mrs. Richardson is the alternative, alternate, and as I mentioned earlier, Mrs. Sears will be attending that conference as well. We have another special day, December 8th, that is our next governing board meeting. At 4:00, we will have a reception for our outgoing board members, President Mayner and Mr. Peterson. That will be held right here in our Curriculum Services Building. We are going to, the creativity has been stretched, and we are going to have a drive-through reception. So, this will be COVID-safe, and so this will be the first ever drive-through reception, so you will be making history with us. We will have a small reception inside, and then we will go into executive session at 5:30 where the governing board and I will meet to do a quarterly review towards my evaluation and talk about the work that we've done in the last, since we met in late October. 6:30, we will have a regular governing board meeting, and then on December 11th, ASBA has a training for new board members, and so our incoming board members that are new to the position, Mrs. Laura Ellingson as well as Dr. Joe O'Reilly will be attending. On December 15th, there will be the swearing-in of our new board members at 5:00, and at 5:30, we'll begin a study session with orientation training for new board members, but of course, all are invited. It's always good to learn and relearn and sharpen up our skills. That will be focused mostly, Mrs. Gregson, General Counsel, will be walking us through that training. Winter break is the week of December 21st, and then we will resume school on Monday, January 4th, and that will then lead us into January 5th. I'm just giving you a preview of where we're going. We will have new board training again on January 5th. That will be training number two. And if there are, I'm just going to stop there. That will get us through December and into the early parts of January. So, a lot happening. Always so excited to be able to provide training so that we're building our skills together.
Thank you. I will look forward to that drive-by. That'll be unique. Yes, drive-through, but it sounds like a drive-by. Just hang out the window, throw things at us passing.
And wish you well.
They're going to probably want these guys to give them some fries or something.
Yes.
All gifts are fine. Very good. Thank you, Dr. Forless. Now we will move on to the consent agenda. All items listed will be considered as a group and will be approved with one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items unless a board member or citizen so requests, in which case, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Do I hear a motion for the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Now for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hutchinson. Is there, are there any, is there any discussion? Would anyone like to pull an item from the consent agenda?
I wanted to discuss a couple of things. I don't want to pull it, but I, as I was looking through the administrative education program fees, and I appreciate Dr. Forless giving me a lot of background and history on it when I asked, but one of the things that we were able to do last year was waive a summer school fee for up to two classes, I think, and that was because of a legislative, the state gave us some money to be able to do that, and I guess I would just, I want that to happen again. I want us to lobby our state legislators. I feel like as we come out of COVID, we will have students in a need to recover some credits, that maybe they have not been as successful at doing it either remotely, or, and so I don't, I just want to encourage everyone to write their legislator and the Education Board that when they go back in session in January that they can, that we would look at maybe doing that same kind of thing again and being able to waive fees for families as they looked to recover credit and stay on track for graduation.
Mrs. Hutchinson or Mrs. Sears, do you have any other items you'd like to either pull or make comment on? Questions?
Board Member Richardson asked my question, so that's, I'm concerned about that as well. And so I thank you for raising it, and again, encourage folks to, encourage legislature to fully fund those types of programs so the kids can recover enough graduate credits to graduate. Thanks, Board Member Richardson, for raising that issue.
Thank you, Mrs. Hutchinson. Mrs. Sears, are you okay to move on? I assume that no sound means yes. I can't see her face, so I don't know if she's shaking yes. With that, then, we will move for the vote. Okay, I think we're...
Mrs. Sears.
Mrs. Sears. We're waiting on Mrs. Sears.
She said she left the call. She joined the call.
I saw it. What did it say? Couldn't read it from here.
Said she left the call and joined. Is she on?
She's on now. Yeah, she just got back on.
Mrs. Sears, were you able to vote for the consent agenda?
A.
I think I heard it.
You're saying X.
Okay. We'll take that as a yes. All right. We will move on to our action items. Number 5A, certificated and classified personnel requests, and we'll turn it over to Dr. Driscoll.
Madam President, members of the board, we're asking for your approval this evening of the certificated and classified personnel request.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the certificated and classified personnel requests, and I wanted to tell Dr. Driscoll I loved the extra memos and public comment. Good job. Thank you. That was really helpful to me.
I did too. Do I hear a second? Very good. Do I have a second? Mr. Peterson seconds it. Any questions or comments for Dr. Driscoll? Mrs. Hutchinson?
Dr. Driscoll, I know that we have, it looks like we still have a sub-duty problem with 135 teachers who have had to cover classes in order to have academic activity for our students. Is there any solution that you see in the horizon for what seems to be a problem at certain schools?
Yeah, what I would say is, one, as we get closer to the break, a lot of our active subs that we have that are, I don't want to say the term "snowbirds," but they come back, so a lot of our active subs that we have in our system won't be back in our system actually subbing to after January, so we should see an influx of that. Another thing is just looking at how we sub. So, in some of the cases that you see there, about 40% of those cases were actual sub shortages, and that's for a myriad of reasons. The others, as we've been proactive in doing onsite subs, is really utilizing our onsite subs in different ways, and I think that will also help combat that as well.
Thank you, because I appreciate your continued work on this, because as I look, I see some teachers who have lost 10 consecutive days of planning period, some six days, seven days, and of course, planning periods are important for planning, but they're also a time when teachers can reach out to their remote students, when teachers can try to contact parents, and that preparation period is essential to making sure that our learning environment is what we expect it to be, not only academically, but also in checking in with students and checking in with parents to make sure the kids are okay. So I really appreciate your ongoing attention to this issue. It's very important. Thank you.
Sears, did you have any questions for Dr. Driscoll?
Not at this time.
Sears, okay. Thank you, and I will second that. I think you heard me say that, but I'll say it again, that I did appreciate your memo. So, thank you for that. With that, we will go for the vote.
I'm going to vote by voice vote, because I'm having some issues over here. So, I.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Sears. Did you put your ear pods in? We had that issue in our study session, for those of you that weren't here. Okay. With that, then, we can move on to discussion items, starting with the review of public health metrics. Dr. Forless?
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board. As we made an agreement in the summer when we passed the COVID-19 resolution, that we would provide a regular update of our public health metrics to the governing board each time that we meet. So it's important to know that this is a standing agenda item, because it is something that is incredibly important to us. You'll notice that this is not an action item, so there is no vote this evening. There is no expectation of our governing board to vote on this. This is informational, and it provides an opportunity for discussion at the board's business meeting. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Williams, who will walk us through the public health metrics, and then we'll open it for some conversation.
Forless, do you have the clicker? Will you click for me?
I will be happy to click. David and I have a thing going on.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
There we go.
So if you'd go to the next slide for it.
That's good. We can do that.
So, tonight, I'm sharing with you, as I have for the past several meetings, for all of the meetings, it seems like this year, the metrics from our state dashboard, and I'll show you some county data and then some local data so that you can see the progression of the COVID pandemic through our community. So as I've been talking about for the past couple of weeks, we are seeing an increase in cases in our community. This slide shows you the school benchmark data that the state released last week, that they recommend that Maricopa County is still in the hybrid. Remember that they changed their guidance a couple of weeks ago to say that you would need three indicators for them to recommend to move into remote. So currently, the county is in one indicator in the red through the state dashboard, and I'll show you how that impacts Mesa here specifically, but this is for Maricopa County. We see a sharp increase in cases per 100,000, and we see a sharp increase in positivity rates. And so, and as they share with us, that the lagging data that we'll see that's still in green right now, but typically, as the cases go up, lagging data is the hospitalizations, and we should see that those numbers will continue to trend up if our curve continues to go straight up. That's what we anticipate happening. Next slide, please. This is, I showed you this, I started showing you this data. I started showing you this dashboard a couple of weeks ago so you could see how the data is trending in Maricopa County. This is a daily updated dashboard, and so you should know that I loaded this yesterday, and today, that last bar is above the previous week already. So we are seeing a sharp increase in positivity cases in the state, and this is, again, toggled to Maricopa County specifically. That case count is over 11,000 for this week, and it's Tuesday. So we have typically what we've been seeing trending is that by the end of the week, it goes bigger than the week prior. This week, it actually grew faster. So it's a steeper curve. The last time that we saw case counts in this range was in July. So we're in an area of community spread in Maricopa County that is concerning. Next slide, please. This is what it looks like in Mesa specifically. For... And remember that this is a two-week lag, so for the two previous weeks. So the week that I showed you that's the real tall one, that will be in Thursday's data this week. And then that'll be averaged in with the previous week. And so we're seeing that our cases per 100,000 are over 200, which is concerning. We haven't seen numbers like that. And I keep telling Dr. Forless, "Gosh, I haven't seen things like this", but I have to remind myself that there wasn't a dashboard in July, and that we weren't tracking cases in the same way in July. So these are all new numbers to be seeing each week, but they are higher than we have experienced this school year, for sure, since the dashboard was fired up and us starting to track it. You'll see that also our trend for the COVID-like illnesses has trended over 5%. So that's what put us in two yellows and a red, which is an indicator from the county that we should be thinking about what does planning for virtual learning or additional mitigation strategies mean. So those are part of the conversations that Dr. Forless and I have regularly about watching the data in specific to Mesa. The next slide. Speaking of specific to Mesa, this is the dashboard as of last Thursday. We are updating it because of the holiday this week. We'll be updating it tomorrow afternoon, as opposed to Thursday morning. Helen and I decided that we really didn't want to be doing dashboard stuff on Thanksgiving mornings, so we'll be watching the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade and things like that. But it will be updated tomorrow afternoon with the most current numbers that we have. So you can see that while we see significant cases in our community, in many of our zip codes, we have areas of red. In our schools, we have many areas that have very few cases. We have, of course, some that we're watching closely. Those places, we are dealing with school by school. So yesterday, Dr. Forless and I did a Facebook Live where we talked about our approach to making decisions about school closure and using the data to inform our decisions. And so we have used both the community data, the county data, and school-specific data to look at things. And so when we've talked to you about making changes at some of our schools, we attempt to do some mitigation strategies first, where we can isolate where the cases are coming from. Can we determine that we are seeing a pocket of positivity in a certain program, in a certain classroom? And can we quarantine that classroom to try and slow it down? We try that first. We've done that at many of our schools, at our elementary schools, at our preschools, at our high schools. Sometimes it's successful. Sometimes we see that, you know, that's not working, and we need to take a next step to mitigation, which would be to quarantine a school... Not quarantine a school, sorry, I said that wrong. Move a school from a learning model of five days modified into two days of modified. And in the case of Sousa Elementary, we moved them to remote because what we saw was the cases weren't student cases at Sousa, they were adult cases. And we felt that the best course of action was remote. Dr. Forless and I have spent a lot of time talking about the different formulas that we could use to make these determinations. And what we found is applying a formula doesn't work when you're looking at the individuals and how the school is impacted. It informs the decision, absolutely. We can use it as a lens through which to look, but knowing the circumstances and having conversations with the administration about where the cases are centered, where the cases are showing up in the programs, and how it's impacting their community, whether it be a community of teachers or a community of students, makes all the difference in making these conversations come to life for us. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Forless to add any conversation to that and then share the next little bit of information with you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Williams. I think that as we look... I'm going to go back a couple, David. Go back one slide, and you're going to see this red that says, "Prepare for virtual onsite support." Now I'm going to go back to the dashboard. We've had many questions. So what are we doing? What's the plan to prepare for virtual support? So what is happening, and this is a recent addition to our protocols, is that Mrs. Williams meets with the administrator of a school when we start to see numbers increasing, meets with that administrator and their leadership team, and then starts to have conversation with them to better identify what are the patterns and behaviors that are happening at the school, and then starts to equip them with the conversation that we need to be paying attention to this because we are looking at a trend that is going in the wrong direction. And so Mrs. Williams walks through. We could move from five days of in-person instruction to two days of modified in-person instruction, or we could move to virtual. So it is a case-by-case decision where we are engaging that leadership team and having a conversation in that preparation of moving from the learning model that they're currently in to that next level of a learning model. And I think that it's important... It's easy to say, "Close. Close our schools." We are not in the business of closing our schools. We would change a learning model. And it's really important for our families to understand we are committed to carrying through learning for our children throughout the academic year. And it just might look... That model might look different based on what the spread looks like in their community or in their school. So it is definitely a school-by-school decision because we have said, kind of, in levels of frustration, saying COVID doesn't behave the same way in every place. It behaves differently, and it impacts different groups of people, and so we need to make very specialized decisions. So just in summary, we have moved a school from five days of in-person learning to remote, and we have moved a school from five days of modified in-person learning to two days of modified in-person, all the while maintaining a remote option for all of our families. Ready for the next one? All right. And this is me. As we go to the next one, I'm going to make yet another plea for continued help. It is really important that daily health assessments are conducted for students as well as staff. So when staff comes in, it's very important. You will see QR codes posted everywhere. Take that attestation. If you are not feeling well, do not come to work. Do not send your children to school. Wearing masks, not only in our schools, but also in our communities. Stay physically distanced to the best extent possible. Wash our hands frequently and avoid large gatherings. So I'm going to take a minute to talk about some large gatherings. We have seen through social media that many of our kids are being invited through social media, typically Instagram. Here's an example of one of these, to winter formals. And these winter formals are gathering large groups of kids, oftentimes wearing masks to the door, but not a mask as they walk through their threshold into this party or into the formal. And so we are seeing that COVID spread is happening there. Mayor Giles has been alerted to this, and he will be communicating with East Area school superintendents to talk about what the city is doing to respond. So they would like to have a level of enforcement around ensuring that the mask mandates are being adhered to and that physically distancing in the best interest of our children is happening in these events. So more information to come, but it is incredibly important. In order to keep our schools open, we must follow all of those yellow checkmarks. I'm going to echo what Mrs. Williams reminds me of every day. We can have large gatherings. We can take off our masks, or we can have in-person school. It's just really difficult to do both. So we have very important decisions to make, not only in our schools, but also within our community.
Dr. Forless, can I add one thing?
Yes, please.
Regarding those winter formals, I want to make it very clear to our community who may be watching, these are not associated with us.
Absolutely not.
We have canceled large gatherings on our campuses purposely as a mitigation strategy to help not spread it. And these are sharing... This information that's being shared in our community has nothing to do with Mesa Public Schools, so I don't want families to think that they're sending their children to a Mesa Public Schools event. They are not.
Excellent reminder.
I appreciate you mentioning that, Mrs. Williams, because I had... I was talking to a parent of a high school student recently, and they were talking about how their son was going to the winter formal for their first dance. And I let her know that that wasn't a school-sponsored dance and that we weren't really quite sure where that was coming from. She had no idea at all. She wanted to know more information and why this was going on, and parents don't even know. So it's kind of... They thought they would come in under the radar. I'm not quite sure who's doing it. Maybe people do know, but I was unable to find out. But it is important to emphasize that, again, I also appreciate your point, Dr. Forless, as you remind her every day when you say that you can make that choice. You can take the mask off. You can go to these large gatherings, or we can keep school in-person learning available to all of our students. Important decisions to make as we enter into the holidays, and we want everyone to know that we're not telling you that we're trying to take away your freedom to choose. We're telling you that we want you to be able to choose and have the options to go to school in-person. So keep that in mind, please. With that, I don't... Oh, the other point I was going to make is that yesterday, you mentioned the Facebook Live. It was entirely dedicated to answering questions about the benchmarks or any questions about open in-person learning and when we were going to go to virtual and if we were going to virtual. And it was excellent. So if you want to answer a lot of your questions... Because as much as we have heard these presentations, there were still questions in that presentation that I didn't know the answer to that helped me. One interesting one that I would point out is that I had just recently heard from a friend that somebody went and got tested for COVID as positive and then went back a few weeks later and was tested positive again. My first thought was, "Oh, my gosh. You mean you can get it twice quickly?" But no, you can test positive and not be contagious once the contagious portion of the virus is gone. You can still test positively. That was interesting to me. So there's all those kind of little facts and information in that Facebook Live, that there is a link on our website you can go to. And if you have any problems, you can call us or go to the webpage and go to the item that says... What does it say on the webpage?
On the front page, it says, "Safe, Strong, Ready." It's our plan. Then you scroll down to our Facebook Live series that we started in the summer. And if you're an employee of Mesa Public Schools, that video was sent out to every employee today.
Great.
And the information that I shared yesterday is not just me making it up. I should share that. Weekly, there is a Maricopa County webinar that they host for school officials, specific to school issues. And Nadine Miller and I and a couple of other leaders in the district watch it religiously every week and take copious notes. And they also send out a weekly, daily update to refresh us on things that are important, and they give us graphics to use in our communication. It's a very helpful partnership that we have with the county, that they are providing much guidance for schools, and the support is remarkable, like they've never done before. And they've ramped it up very, very quickly. And I just want folks to know that it's not the world according to Holly. It's the world according to the health professionals who help schools make these decisions and guide the discussions.
And I would say that information has evolved. This is a fluid situation where what was true in March is no longer true today. And it may not be the right way to phrase that. It was probably true in March. We just didn't know about it as much as today. But there are some things that have changed, and that is how it's been being approached and what things are being done to help mitigate it. So it is really a fluid situation, and to approach it as a district as such, I think you deserve accolades for that because I know this is time-intensive, and you do have other jobs to do here in the district. You're very busy, and we appreciate all the dedication that all of you have made to help us, to give us the choice of in-person or virtual. So thank you. Mrs. Richardson, I can tell you're biting at the...
I'm dying to speak. But I watched it yesterday, too, and I thought it was important because I think sometimes you look at our school data dashboard, which I am appreciative of because now, you know, earlier when we were making decisions, we didn't have this individual school information. And now it is our best information to make decisions about what needs to happen at individual schools. It's better than a zip code or a... because it's telling us what's happening on our campuses. And I thought it was important, and you brought up the point yesterday in the Facebook Live, that it is... You don't wait till Thursday to say, "Oh, my goodness. Look at that. They've got 19 cases." You know as that's coming in, and you're having those conversations daily. And so sometimes people may see a mitigation strategy happen at a school or happen, and they think, "Well, we weren't even nearly as bad as somewhere else, or we weren't... You know, we didn't have this..." There's no magic threshold. Once you cross it, now you're remote. It's really based on... And you're having those conversations hour by hour, minute, you know, day by day so that every case is treated individually and seriously. And I appreciated that part a lot. And I loved getting the letters I get at home that now you've added a grade level into... You know, if you have multiple children at a school, now you know which grade level class that was to help you because it's a fine line between balancing HIPAA and FERPA and also making sure parents are aware and know that there's been a possible exposure and you want to watch extra closely to see if that worked. What kind of contact tracing would you say? You know what I mean? Like, how do you do that in the district?
You know, our nurses are very active in that piece of it. They help us tremendously with that. They ask the questions around, you know, where were you? What contact do you have? What do you participate in? So the Google form that we use as a reporting tool shares a lot of that information. Are you on a sports team? Are you in a club? Or, you know, where have you been? That maybe the opportunity for mitigation might be a little riskier because if you're on a sports team, maybe you don't always wear a mask. So we do a lot of that kind of... And then the other contact tracing that we do is more with me, with the administrator, and asking, "Okay, what size class is that student in? Is that a bigger class where it's harder to keep them six feet apart? Is it a closer class? Is it farther apart?" So we do some of that conversation. The county really helps us with the true contact tracing, where they follow through and make the phone calls with folks. But when we know, for example, if we have a counselor test positive, for example, we take their meeting log, and we contact each of those students that they met with individually. So we do some of it, but the county really does a heavy lift when it comes to the real, true contact tracing. We do as much as we can with the staff that we have. Our nurses carry a big part of that burden.
I got another letter, too, that said something like, "Well, I hear parents aren't reporting that their child tested positive to the district, but there's really no way..."
For those... I don't know if they don't tell us, but I will say that I believe, based on the numbers that I'm seeing, that we get a lot of people to tell us. And I reminded everybody yesterday, and I will do it again tonight, that when we reopened, we asked everybody to sign a document saying they understand what COVID is and what they're agreeing to. And one of the things they agreed to was what they're agreeing to. And one of the things they agreed to was, if they signed that thing, said, you will tell us if you test positive.
But the county does find out. And so sometimes you have heard from the county.
That's a really good, no, all the time. So, yes. So it may be that they don't tell us. But the, the challenge with the county is, I like to have the data really fast. And, and so when families call, then we know quickly. The county with the volume that you see, that the uptick in cases, it's a couple of days lag. So typically, they're calling us and saying, it's, okay, it's time to send a letter. And we say, oh, we sent it three days ago. So, but there are, there are cases where the county has called us, and we didn't have any idea. And then we could send the letters and make sure that folks were appropriately notified.
I think, I think it's one of those things that we want to make sure our community- My microphone is on screen. Oh, there we go. We want to make sure our community knows that the faster you can tell us, it's, it's not a punishment for your kid or their siblings. It's allowing us to keep more people safe. And so we want to make that plea also, to make sure they're calling their school and letting them know as soon as they know that this is what's happened.
And even, even leaving a message on the voicemail at the attendance line over the weekend, we catch those up on Monday mornings with our nurses and our attendance folks. So if they find out over the weekend, it's okay to call and leave a message. We'll call you back, and we'll get the information that we need. So Mondays are a very busy day typically for us.
That brings up another question, the quarantine. Does that begin when the test is given? Is that begin if you've had it a week and you decide to go get the test, and they say, oh, I've had it a week? When does the quarantine begin? Does it end?
Depends on, it's an individual conversation with each person. Unfortunately, I don't have a, it's, sometimes it's when symptoms begin, if we can isolate when that is. But sometimes people can't tell us exactly when that is, so we use the test date. So the doctors and the county typically help us with setting those quarantine dates. The doctors usually tell them, you're quarantined for these days. And that's what they share with us. And it's on the test results, too. They tell them when, how-
And I'm sure, I'm sure they err in the direction of being more cautious and proactive.
Anytime they do, yes. And I want to make the clarification, too. There was some confusion in the world, school days versus calendar days. It's 14 calendar days, not school days. I just want to make that clear. Because folks thought that the quarantine was a school day thing, and it's not. It's a, it's a calendar days.
I saw that in a letter from a teacher who had, the teacher had reported, and it did end up being 14 school days, but it was because it overlapped Thanksgiving. And so it had, it wasn't-
It was a coincidence that it ended up being 14 school days because of the Thanksgiving break. But that's not, that's not how we count.
That's not how you count.
Yeah. It would be, yeah, because it, some days, some weeks, it would be 18 days. Yeah.
Before we go on, I'm going to have Mr. Peterson, if he has any questions, and of course, Mrs. Sears and Mrs. Hutchinson. But I want to mention once again, the first, one of the first things Dr. Forless said, this is a discussion. The board does not vote on whether we end in-person learning, or if we go to a modified in-person learning, or any of those options. This is for discussion. We already made that decision when the, the board voted on a resolution to have the superintendent to make, make that decision. So I just wanted to make some clarification about that as we go forward. We have people that have comments this evening that we were, we are going to hear from. And then I wanted to continue with board members at this time. So, Mr. Peterson, did you have any questions? Thank you. Mrs. Hutchinson?
Yes, I have one question for Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Williams, what is the turnaround time for the county reporting to the school district that we have a student that is positive? Or is it, is it quite quick, or does it take a number of days?
It was quick when the pandemic was less active. It's gotten longer. I don't have an exact count for you. I think it's between three and five days after the test results come in. But I'll tell you that most, almost all of the information we have comes directly from parents, and they tell us either, either the day they get their test results or the next day. So we're not seeing a lag time in our parents' reporting typically.
Okay, so we, we really are relying on parents to honestly keep us informed as to the health status of their, of their child. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. We're, we're seeing some, some action in social media where, where parents are being encouraged not to report, because then it impacts teams, or clubs, or, or other type of, of cultural activities, say like the under choir or something like that. And, and we, we as teachers know that not always our kids kept home when they're ill. So one of the things that I would like to make mention is in, in, in reiterating what Dr. Forless has said, what you have said, and what President Minor has said, is that we need to work as a community, a community that cares for its kids. We have received a number of emails since our last meeting, encouraging us to keep schools open. And it is not our decision as a board to keep schools open. It is each and every individual's decision to keep schools open. Our kids are, are doing, our teachers are doing, our administrators are doing, we are doing the best job we can to mitigate this pandemic. We must care as a community to make sure we are not community spreading. Schools are not the super spreaders we thought they would be. But the community spread is now coming into our schools. When I take a look at 68 adults that have been impacted, I know a lot of parents see the great benefit, the, the social emotional benefit to school. They, they write to us and thank us that their kids are thriving, that there is now some certainty for their families. But I, I, I want to caution everyone that our adults that work with our children are fearful. As COVID cases rise, their stress level is also riding. And I, I am, I'm really dismayed when I learn of homecoming dances that are sponsored by private parties, winter formals, sleepovers, birthday parties. These, these employees are our adults. They have to be with our students in order for there to be school. We have already had one school that's had to close because we could not staff the school properly to provide a learning environment for our children. So please, as a community, let us come together and say, we will, we will keep schools open. Particularly during the holiday, when it is so tempting to meet with particularly family members. Let us think that wearing a mask keeps schools open. Socially distancing keeps schools open. Being outside keeps schools open. Our teachers, our staff members are doing their best. They are our frontline workers. Please think of them, those who work with our kids and keep our schools open. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hutchinson. Mrs. Sears, did you have any comments?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And thank you, Mrs. Hutchinson, for reiterating that. We appreciate you. You mentioned in there, we teachers, we still consider you one of our board members, Mrs. Hutchinson. Once a teacher, always a teacher. We know, we know, I know.
That's right.
That's right. It's in your blood. So with that, we will open the floor to those who have asked to speak to this agenda item. And we will begin. I will remind you, because of the number we have here, we can go as much as three minutes. And because we only have, I believe, five at this time that would like to speak. So I'm going to start with Sutton McKenna. And following Sutton, so that they will be prepared, will be Kevin Burley. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Sutton?
Hi. So thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name's actually McKenna Sutton. I am an eighth grade social studies teacher at Fremont Junior High. We are in a position now where Maricopa County health officials recommend that our district prepare to return to remote learning. While I am sure this is disheartening for many, this was something that was predicted to happen weeks and even months ago. I know you are all facing a tremendous amount of pressure to keep schools open. It is still horrific to me that this pandemic has become an issue of politics instead of morality. There are members of the staff at my school who are questioning if they can finish the year because of the lack of support and flat-out disrespect that seems to be coming from the district. If the district office is closed right now, why aren't schools closed? If staff meetings are now supposed to be done remotely, why are we still packing in 30-plus students in a classroom every single day? It is becoming harder and harder each day to enforce social distancing during lunchtime, passing periods, and before and after school. More and more students are resisting to wear their masks properly. More and more students are going to large gatherings outside of school. More and more students are telling me that they have tested positive, but then we are not receiving any communication from our school. We see that the zip codes that feed into our school are red, both two reds and a yellow constantly around us. When the issue of reopening schools was continuously debated at these meetings during the summer and early months of the school year, many parents stood up here crying, begging, and pleading for the needs of their children. They said that their children were starved for social interaction. They were struggling to learn and adapt to the new challenges of remote learning, and argued that what was best for their children was to return to school. While I understand that most of these statements were true and made with the best intentions, we must look at what is best for all 64,000-plus Mesa Public Schools students, thousands of employees, and the families of students and staff. Remote learning was awful. We can all agree on that. But the right to live outweighs all else. We do not know or understand what the long-term effects of this virus are. We have no way of knowing who will get the virus and have a mild immune response, and who will die. All it will take is for one student or one employee to die, and the conversation will take a drastic turn. Must we let this happen? Must we have a sacrificial lamb before we can see and do what is right? The longer we refuse to accept reality and live in a state of denial that this will end soon, the longer we will be in a state of purgatory and hell that is this pandemic. We have to accept the fact that this is going to be our new normal for a while. District leadership and our superintendency have the unfortunate task of having the power to play God, because your choice may be a matter of life and death. So what will you choose? Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to give Dr. Forless an opportunity for some clarification on a few points you made. Just because there are people watching, we want to make sure that correct information is getting out, and this, and this is a critical time for that. So she mentioned the district office being closed. She mentioned that people are test positive, but we don't hear about that. And I think I'll stop at that one. The last one, I won't make comment on.
Thank you, President Minor. Yes, our district offices opened the day that we opened a five-day of in-person learning. So on October 12th, we did open up all of our district offices. We do have some employees that also, that do have ADA accommodations or are using our telework policy. But our district offices are all open, and we have staff in our buildings.
Miss, ah, sorry. Mrs. Williams, you already addressed that, but you could reiterate on the testing positive.
Yeah, the, I don't know how to answer if a student is saying they're positive, and we don't know. We only know through the county reporting to us and families reporting to us. If, if a student, if a teacher learns of a student saying that they're positive, I would encourage them to go to the nurse. The nurse can call the county, and we can track those records down in case they haven't gotten to us yet. They are very willing to look through their database and find it for us. And we've had that happen at a couple of schools already, where somebody says, well, I think I got it from so-and-so who's positive, and we didn't know that so-and-so. And so Nadine Miller and our, our Director of Health Services calls the county right away, and we get the confirmation, and we can take action. So I would encourage anybody who learns that through their classroom to please report that to the nurse. The nurse has a mechanism by which we can check that information.
And President Minor, I'd like to add another comment about district offices being open. I would be remiss if I didn't say that we have many employees who have never stopped working. Schools were closed in March, and we have frontline workers that were serving food, distributing technology, working on our grounds, working in all of our departments that have, the district office has never closed for many of those departments. So I want to make sure that we had a correction. We've got members here that have never, have not had a day away from their work.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to the next Kevin Burley. And after Kevin is Rebecca Smith.
President Minor, Dr. Forless, members of the governing board, I am Kevin Burlat, a concerned teacher from Mesa High School. As you discuss and provide guidance to the superintendency, we have and continue to ask you to pay attention to the science of what's going on. Last time I was here, we were moving the goalposts in terms of positivity from 5% to 7%. We've had our goalposts moved again, this time by the state. Instead of one metric, now we have to meet three. Metrics are red. With Mesa High School, it's as red as my shirt. But the third metric is faulty. It's not reported by the hospitals. It doesn't have to be. It'd be the equivalent of us reporting our EDM to the state by asking the students, how often were you absent? So with that in mind, here's what the district policies look like when applied to a teacher. I receive a notice of exposure. I have no idea who it is. Is it the student near my desk? Is it the student across the room? Is it the one diligent and wearing a mask? Is it the one pulling the mask off? We don't know. So now my family's impacted. Do I stay home? Do I have to spend a week in a hotel to keep my family safe? At that point, I take a test. Well, what do I do? Do I call out and impact my colleagues who now have to pick up the slack for me? Or do I continue to work because I'm not feeling bad? But I don't know. I'm Schrodinger's cat, simultaneously positive and negative, till the test results come back. Fortunately for me, the test results were negative, but at this point, we're just waiting for the next notice. Because there isn't much guidance unless you're feeling sick as to what to do. As we look ahead, is one day enough time to really determine whether a student will be positive or negative after Thanksgiving? Or is that just one more day for the students to gather together and potentially expose themselves? We've heard that parents send sick students. We've seen it on social media. We've seen the organized dances, and we know this weekend is going to be rough. Students may recover, but these impacts are felt throughout the school. I ask you to be proactive instead of reacting too late. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize for not pronouncing your name correctly, Burlet. I'm from, my family's from France, and it looks like Burley to me, so.
I dig it all the time.
Oh, okay. I apologize. Dr. Forless, again, I'm going to turn to you. And again, this is in the spirit of making sure that correct information, not challenging you at all. So please understand that. But I did want to ask Dr. Forless or Mrs. Williams to maybe respond to the expo, not knowing where the exposure is coming from, and not being clear on if it is in your, in your classroom, or close to you in different circumstances at your school. Could you maybe address that?
Ms. Williams, she's got all the information about the plethora of letters that we have that go out.
So we do not disclose the name of the student who tests positive to, in the, in our community. And again, walking that HIPAA and FERPA line. But we do tell teachers specifically what class is impacted, and the community, we let community know that which class it is in, and grade level for the high schools, and class for the elementary schools. And then we do a community-wide letter, so that the community knows there's a positive in the community. And then we do a specific staff letter. So there are, there are many level, there are a lot of letters that go every day, in an, in an attempt to be transparent in that. But we do not tell specifics around the name of the student, or, or faculty member for that matter, who tests positive.
On? Okay. Thank you again. Then the next person was Rebecca Smith, and after which that will be Bruce Jones.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Smith. I'm the mother to three sons, a second grader and a fifth grader at Palmroy, and an eighth grader at Kino. I also am the secondary ELA content specialist for the district. In a time of uncertainty, there are a few things that my boys can count on. They can count on listening to Kenny Rogers in the morning when they wake up on vinyl. They can count on chocolate chip pancakes and Taco Tuesdays. And they can count on Norse mythology before bedtime. These type of little things are really important right now in a world where life can change within the hour. All of us need that kind of certainty. I grew up believing that the school building was more home to me than the four walls that I slept in. I know how important schools are. Beyond test scores, or school grades, or enrollment numbers, I want our schools open. But now is not the time. Tonight, I'm asking you to give us some certainty. My 13-year-old checks the dashboard every Thursday. With every letter we get regarding COVID exposure, he gets more apprehensive. He's lost two math teachers this year already. He needs certainty. Our teachers need certainty. They're covering classes because there is a lack of substitutes. They're changing teaching modalities with flash fast. They know, they need to know that you believe them, that you are listening when they say this is too much. Our community needs certainty. They need to know they have leaders who will make the difficult call. So I'm asking you to be courageous, to make bold decisions, knowing you will not be able to make every person happy. I'm asking you to join Tempe Union High School District, Tempe Elementary School District, Bald School District, Buckeye Elementary District, Phoenix Union High School District, Phoenix Elementary District, Glendale Union High School District, Washington Elementary District, Kyrene Elementary School District, Casa Grande Elementary School District. District, Kyrene Elementary School District, Casa Grande Elementary School District, Paradise Valley Unified School District, and Yuma Union High School District, and others, all of whom have made the necessary call to return to virtual learning until at least January. I'm asking you to give us the certainty we need to keep ourselves safe through the holiday season. I'm asking you to make the call to return to virtual learning now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Bruce Jones, and after that is Lori Beth Hutchison. It's Hutchison.
Good evening, President Minor, Dr. Forless, and board members. So I'm Bruce Jones. I teach at Mesa High School, and I'm also a parent of two juniors at Skyline High School. And I think the teachers have done a wonderful job, especially appreciated Mr. Burlat, who's one of my colleagues at Mesa High, and his comments. I'm really fortunate to be at Mesa High, I think, right now, especially since, for two reasons. One, I think we only had about 60% of our students return. My classroom, for spacing reasons, I did my calculations. I mapped it all out, and I have tables in my science classroom, so, you know, there's no spacing in between students if I have the maximum, if I exceed my table groups. I happen to have 19 on my roster, but I know that's not the case at most of the high schools. In fact, I asked my boys, you know, "What's it like at your classes?" and, you know, they talk about very little space. I think it's been, it's been good on the communication side in many regards, Ms. Williams, for your tracking, and the building level administration has been good. Mr. Brennan has been wonderful to work with. We got one of those letters, and I didn't know which of my twins, because unfortunately, they're in the same grade, so there were no grade levels at that time either, but it wouldn't have helped. But he called me back on the weekend, in fact, and we were able to have a conversation about which of my boys was the area of concern at that time. I appreciate the district leadership with the Facebook Live meetings, et cetera, and I hope that that will continue, especially as we start moving toward, we have now three vaccines that have been shown to be effective to up to 90% or better. And as we move toward vaccinations and such, you know, I hope that the district will take an advocacy position in that regard as well. I know that in the Northeast area, you can go on the state's website and find out which schools have how many students that are not vaccinated, and some of those Northeast schools have really high numbers. And that, I think, should be a concern. The other piece that I just wanted to mention was because of all the excitement about going home for Thanksgiving, et cetera, there's been a huge increase in testing, and I hope that we'll take that into consideration, that context, and if we see just a short little blip, because right now, seven out of our 14 ZIP codes are red in two metrics or more, and I'm sure that the percent positivity will be popping up here. And if in two weeks, we see that there's a little drop, please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Lori Beth Hutchison.
I'm here tonight to share some of my observations as a parent and a teacher. I can't help but notice that the last important notifications that I've received from my children's school and my own school no longer state, quote, "We believe your child's exposure risk is low." Makes this mother of four and teacher of many wonder what instigated that change. I can't help but notice that while the boardroom has limited capacity, I'm still teaching in a class of 27 students. Nothing about 27 students in a classroom is modified. I couldn't help but notice that while I'm interacting with 100 students in person each day, my superintendent presents her information via Facebook Live with a peer joining from a separate office. I can't help but notice that superintendency is privy to live COVID statistics, but the community is not. As a parent of students in a program with rising numbers, timeliness of data is essential so parents can make responsible decisions for their own families. I can't help but notice that while Dr. Forless continues to ask members of our community to institute mitigation strategies, they appear to be ignored by more people than I'm comfortable with. I can relate. I teach junior high, and I feel like a broken record providing reminders of how to wear a mask. I can't help but notice that in your Facebook Live event, Mrs. Williams indicated that if she were exposed or positive, that it should be known so that people she interacted with, like Dr. Forless, could be on the lookout for symptoms or take extra precautions and not visit an elderly or sick family member. Teachers aren't afforded that same information. I can't help but notice that if an employee gets sick, their children cannot come to school, but if their spouse, who is also an employee, they're expected to show up, so long as they don't have symptoms. All of this makes me wonder what it will take for us to make hard decisions like so many other districts across the valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that ends our comments for that item, and so we are going to move on to the superintendent's update.
Madam President, members of the board, I am honored to share what has been happening recently inside of Mesa Public Schools. But as we get started, as we always begin, we really need to focus on the why we do the work that we do, which is our promise, to know our students in Mesa Public Schools by name, serve them by strength and need, so that they graduate ready for college, career, and community. David, we're going to click one more. There we go. And one more. And as we think about the times that we're living in, I'm happy to say that World Kindness Day was last week. And on November 13th, we celebrated World Kindness Day. The administrative team at Skyline High School spread a little kindness on campus by delivering freshly popped kettle corn to their hard-working staff. We know that our staffs have been working really, really hard and going through some difficult times with an amazing, small, small gesture of kindness and appreciation. What a creative and delicious way to share kindness within the Skyline community. The next slide is American Education Week. We celebrated American Education Week last week on social media. All week long, we recognized and honored public education and our incredible educators, our staff and community who work together to ensure the success of each of our students. From teachers, administrative leaders and support staff, to our families and Mesa community, thank you for your support. Thank you for your kindness to uplift and to encourage our students during these times. And thank you for helping keep our students safe, strong, and ready to learn. Moving on to our next slide, a conversation that we've been having is about the impressive work that our educators are doing. Our schools continue to impress us with their dedication to collaborative learning. Remote learning can come with many challenges, but our students, alongside those very hard-working teachers, continue to model the essential skills needed to succeed. We love seeing teams like the Steam Junk Crew, seventh through 12th graders from our Native American education program, flexing their critical thinking and innovation skills as they work on a project with electromagnetic propulsion. Both our students and teachers have shown true resilience in the transition to a remote learning space. We talked earlier in the equity presentation that as part of our goal to ensure equity across our schools, the district has launched an Equity Advisory Council to further meet the needs of our community. This council brings together a variety of important roles in our district to analyze and explore how we can further pursue equity for all of our learners. It is part of our strategic plan to provide equitable access to opportunities, to resources, and support, so that all learners can engage in and contribute to meaningful learning. I will be sure to update you about this important work of the council throughout the upcoming year. And this is also the perfect opportunity to congratulate Governing Board Member Kiana Sears on her new leadership role in civil rights and equity as the president of the East Valley NAACP. Moving on to the next slide. We have mentioned multiple times the importance of staying vigilant as we head into the holidays. So as both a mitigation strategy as well as a much-needed professional learning and planning day for staff, I would like to remind you all that November 30th will be an asynchronous remote learning day for all students. On that day, students will remain home and complete assignments provided by their teachers in Canvas. Teachers will spend the day in professional learning, collaborating with their team, and planning lessons for the remainder of the semester. They will not be providing remote instruction. Other employees will work at their regular job, receive professional learning, and support our students' needs. This remote day supports our safe, strong, ready plan. Safe, as an additional day away from school, will decrease the likeliness of school spread of COVID-19 due to the social activities related to the Thanksgiving holiday. Our goal is to keep our schools open for five days of modified in-person learning. It is strong. The extra day of planning for teachers will support finishing the first semester strong and provide them an opportunity to be ready for that second semester. We continue to remind our community to practice mitigation strategies both on and off campus. That means daily home health assessments, wearing masks, physical distancing as much as possible, and regular handwashing and hand sanitizing. We have shared these messages via social media and direct family communication on the district website and on the homepage of every school website. As we head into the Thanksgiving holiday, these health and safety reminders are increasingly important. Please stay safe, strong, and ready so that we can return to learning. The next slide, we will play our Thanksgiving video, but before we do that, I would like to express my deep personal gratitude to our students, to our staff, and our families, as this has been a challenging year for all of us. I am in awe of the resiliency of our teachers as they relearn and redesign the art and science of teaching, deal with feelings of self-doubt, and question their effectiveness. Every day, our staff is working hard to seek solutions to what feels like insurmountable problems, and they are tirelessly looking for the successes in a world of unknowns. And all of this is intensified by the pressures of accountability that needs to be redefined. I value and I appreciate your collaborative efforts as we support our students and nurture their learning. Whether you get students to school safely, ensure that they are fed, or you provide a safe learning at school, all of you are important. Each of you, please take care of yourselves. Be safe, be strong, be healthy. These times have been tough on all of us, and if you need support, please reach out to your supervisor or our Employee Assistance Program. Services can be accessed virtually or in person. When we return after the Thanksgiving holiday, we will reintroduce our employee check-in surveys to help us better understand how to address your needs and concerns. Finally, I want to wish you all a very happy and healthy Thanksgiving holiday. And to conclude my update, I'd like to share the video that we sent to the Mesa Public Schools family earlier today. Ina and David. Hello, Mesa Public Schools community. I'm Andy Forless, your proud superintendent. As we head into Thanksgiving break, I'd like to express my gratitude for all of our teachers, staff, students, and families for their resilience during these historic times. We know this year has been unlike any other that we have seen in our lifetime. COVID-19 has affected our community, with some areas hit harder than others. However, our community has come together with support and care. It's up to all of us to keep students learning in person. Please stay vigilant, wear your masks, and physical distance as much as possible, and wash your hands or use hand sanitizer regularly. Avoid large gatherings, and if you have any symptoms of COVID-19, please get tested and stay home to keep others safe. Remember, all students will be participating in self-guided remote learning on Monday, November 30th. This is so we can be safe and so that our staff can participate in professional learning and planning to finish our semester strong, so we can be ready for a successful second semester. Physical distancing doesn't mean being apart. We know the holidays can exacerbate depression, anxiety, and other mental health concerns. We have a variety of resources, including crisis hotline numbers on our website at MPSAZ.org/ParentResources. Once again, on behalf of our district leadership and governing board, thank you for your partnership. From generous donations to words of encouragement, your support has helped us meet the many needs of our students, staff, and families. Enjoy a happy Thanksgiving with your loved ones. concludes my superintendent's update for this evening.
You, Dr. Forless. We will go on to discussion item 6C, and that is update on instructional framework aligned to portrait of a graduate igniting a culture of learning and well-being.
President Minor and honored board members, it is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Tracy Eastless and Amy Uchaz. Amy Uchaz is our Director of Professional Learning, and you know Dr. Eastless as our Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. This is a journey. As we think about our strategic plan and our strategic goals coming together, we want to just take an opportunity to provide an update on one portion of the igniting a culture of learning and well-being, which is our instructional framework. And you're going to see some tight connections back to the work of equity that we talked about in our study session.
Thank you, Dr. Forless, Madam President, Governing Board members, and superintendency. We are excited to share with you our update on the progress of the creation of our instructional framework. And so tonight, we're going to give you just a little brief overview. As you heard previously, in our goal of ensuring equity, this strategic goal also has equity woven through it, because without an instructional framework, we can't ensure that all of our students have access to high-quality instruction. So we're going to talk a little bit tonight about what that means, what it looks like, and where we're at. So again, this is a familiar slide to you. This is our strategic goal of igniting a culture of learning and well-being, and you'll see on the bottom portion there is the instructional framework. And that is the result of our steering committee and everything that they believed through the lens of a portrait of a graduate, our journey should entail. And Mesa Public Schools has not had an instructional framework, and so you will see that our district currently, for the most part, is in the acclimate continuum or portion of the continuum there. As a result of the steering committee work and the work that they did with Amos Fodcheck from our Advanced Learning Partnerships, there were several subcommittees or workgroups that came out of that steering committee. And within the strategic goal of igniting a culture of learning and well-being, that instructional framework was one of those workgroups. And at that time, Dr. Forless tasked our instructional leadership team of superintendency to identify some members to be participants on that workgroup. And those folks were made up of all kinds of stakeholders across our three area feeder patterns, department staff who are linked to instruction and teaching and learning, and principals, assistant principals, deans, team leaders. Mrs. Williams is a part of that team as well. So from the time that those workgroups came about, they started to have conversations around what we believe to be effective instruction and what components should make up effective instruction. So not only beliefs, but also research and those components that are going to ensure that equity and that access to high-quality, effective instruction for all of our students. Those workgroups then defined some of the framework pieces, and at that time, we then hired consultant Dr. Doug Fisher. As again, you heard in the study session, he is a renowned author, is a professor at San Diego State University for Educational Leadership, and also a practitioner. He currently runs a school in California. And so he has been helping our workgroup to define those major components around what we believe to be effective instructional components. The work started, and you'll hear a little bit more in detail later as Mrs. Uchaz takes us on the journey, but just a little bit about where we started way back in the summertime, and actually last spring, that workgroup started to define those components. And then, as you heard earlier, at our General Administrators Meeting and our Leadership Academy this past summer, that work was then rolled out to all of our site administrators to start providing input and creating an understanding around that common language and those components. And so you'll see those arrows going back and forth. It's, like Dr. Forless said, an ongoing process. It's not going to happen overnight, and it's not even going to be completely implemented and understood. And. and understood, and it'll be an ongoing framework that, over the next couple of years, we will need to continue to loop out to stakeholders. Our administrators are helping to co-create that right now, and then eventually, over the next couple of years, working with our teachers and community members at each of our schools. Just to reiterate, who are those workgroup members? A maximum of 25 representatives were asked to be selected to participate and representative of our three areas and those school sites. You'll see in the administrative comments, you'll be able to see who some of those workgroup members are there, but you'll see there's a representation across all of our district. So why do we need an instructional framework and what is an instructional framework? It all starts with the promise. It starts and ends with the promise. We want to ensure that high-quality instruction for our students. So to take you a little bit on the journey about what an instructional framework is, we're going to use the metaphor of, or simile, of a kitchen. And so to build a little background knowledge regarding what an instructional framework is and why it's needed, I want you to consider this quote from a Better Homes and Garden "All kitchens share the same purpose and elements. Refrigerators are for chilling, counters for chopping, sinks for cleanup, et cetera. So are all kitchens the same? Hardly. Like painters at canvases, kitchen designers make individual choices in layouts, colors, cabinets, and such. The best result comes when the design is tailored to the needs of a particular household. Can you imagine trying to design, say, a kitchen without a framework to guide you? Where would you start? Would you make it up as you went along? How would you choose among the thousands of building products that are available in the home improvement stores? What would the fad of the day be and how will it influence your choices? How would you make sure those choices fit together so that your kitchen is operational? How would you communicate your ideas to others? And what would you ensure, to ensure that your choices remain functional over time?" So as you take a look at these three kitchens, you'll see they all have some of the same essential ingredients and what makes a kitchen a kitchen. The same problems and all those questions occur when a school operates without a common instructional framework or a district operates without a common instructional framework. Teachers are left to select things on their own. They have a multitude of instructional strategies to choose from. They need to sort out how to work collaborative with colleagues who may have a completely different mental picture. And improvement efforts can become diffused and scattered over time as teachers plan and design instruction if they don't have a common language and understanding of what those essential ingredients are. So these kitchens all have the same components within them, all the same ingredients of what makes a kitchen a kitchen, but the one on the left can be remodeled and updated, just like the one in the middle. And it still contains a sink to wash dishes. It still has a place to chill food and a place to warm or cook food. And likewise, some prefer to have kitchens outside, but they still, again, you'll see, have the same functionality based on those main ingredients of chilling, cooking, and So you've seen this slide before. It's an image from many of the roadwork slides from our strategic plan. And so just like our strategic plan helps us to focus our district, an instructional framework will help us focus on those best practices or ingredients for effective instruction, again, ensuring that all kids in Mesa Public Schools have access to high-quality, effective instruction with those ingredients. So we know teachers want to provide the best for their students. They want to work in classrooms where students are actively engaged, where the work is meaningful and relevant, and they want to know that they're responding to the strengths and needs of our students. And so we know, again, too, that teaching's super complicated. We've heard it over and over as we've been challenged with all of our different learning models and the environment that we're in. And so with so many pieces of teaching and the education puzzle, that we know they can become overwhelmed or frustrated, and that's why we need an instructional framework in Mesa Public Schools. We need that common understanding of what the ingredients are to go into that effective instruction and keep us focused. So this is just a little comparison of what an instructional framework is or what it does and what it's not. And again, just to reiterate, they are, an instructional framework has proven components for instruction. They align or will be looked through the lens of our Portrait of the Graduate. They can be flexible in terms of the implementation of the practices to how we get there, as long as we maintain true to those effective components or ingredients. And that common language and that framework will also help guide our mentoring. We talk about retaining teachers and onboarding, and this will allow those collaborative teams to provide that coaching, that mentoring, and guide our professional learning for our teachers and leaders. What it's not, and there's some confusion around, we implement the Danielson Evaluation Framework. An instructional framework is not the evaluation framework. The Danielson Framework outlines the roles and responsibilities of a teacher. Those are the effective ingredients for being a teacher and how to be a teacher, whereas an instructional framework provides ingredients for how to design and implement effective instruction. And again, it's not a one-size-fits-all, just like those three kitchens look very, very different. They have some of the same similar main ingredients, but they can be adapted and modified to fit the needs of your students, your community, your teams, and the styles or models that your school might have. So we'll talk a little bit more about that, too. Okay, and I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Uchaz to go a little bit more in detail.
Looking perfect. All right. So we're going to get into just some more concrete examples of what an instructional framework is and look at some definitions to provide some more information regarding that. But much like the earlier example of the kitchen remodel that Dr. Eastless demonstrated, the instructional framework provides the essential ingredients for instruction. It provides consistent principles and language that are essential to how all teachers engage in instruction. And looking at that definition, that shared and coherent belief system and mission and understanding of those instructional principles is really, really critical when we think about the what of the instructional framework. And as a kitchen includes appliances like a refrigerator, a sink, or an oven, if it didn't, it would just be another room. Those elements of the kitchen make it a kitchen. And similarly, these ingredients, the shared belief, our mission, our understanding, and those terms that we use to define those instructional elements of our framework are what make up the ingredients of our instructional framework. Critical elements of a framework provide the principles that help us to attain our desired outcomes of the essential attitudes and skills of the Portrait of a Graduate and the standards for our students. And like Dr. Eastless mentioned, it is not one-size-fits-all. And so just like a kitchen is different, the practices we use would adhere to our instructional framework and should be implemented based on the needs and the strengths of the students of Mesa Public Schools. So in this situation, as a cook in my kitchen, my practices might include adding a little bit more salt or a little bit more flour. Collaboration, as an example, is one of the elements that continues to surface in our workgroup and with our principals as an essential ingredient of our instructional framework. So I know that I need to add collaboration, but as the teacher, I know that a cup is what I need to add. I might add a cup and a half. How I then use those practices to get to that element and that essential ingredient might look different from classroom to classroom, but those essential ingredients are always a part of my recipe. I can add to and be flexible and bring in other practices, but those essential ingredients always remain the same. In that regard, AVID, Arts Integration, Montessori, Dual Language, and IBR are a set of philosophies and associated practices that represent the ingredients of an instructional framework. So those all demonstrate strong practices that help us build those essential ingredients that are a part of our framework. We'll take a look at this a little bit further here. So again, the instructional framework is shared principles and expectations that guide instruction. It's a common professional language, and it really supports those conversations with our collaborative teams that they have around guiding instruction. So Dr. Eastless talked a little bit about the benefits of having that common language. So going back to the remodel example, if we're going to remodel a kitchen and I come in and I call it a hammer, and Dr. Forless calls it something else, and Dr. Eastless calls it something else, we then have a misconception, but essentially, we're all talking about the same thing. We're all talking about the same tool, but yet we're all calling it something different. The beauty of an instructional framework is that it gives us language, common beliefs and understanding of the principles that are essential to teaching and learning in Mesa Public Schools. And so our collaborative teams can then sit and have a conversation about instructional design and encompass those ingredients. They can vertically articulate with other team members across the campus using the same language to ensure they're all embedding those ingredients. It also is true when we're onboarding new teachers who come into Mesa Public Schools. We then have a common language and a common understanding. That's a really critical piece of the instructional framework. As Dr. Eastless noticed, we started this journey really last year. Our first opportunity with Dr. Fisher with our principals was in the early spring/winter of last year. He came to our GAM in January and started to talk about teacher clarity, which is a component of our instructional framework. He then came again and talked with our principals about teacher credibility. The workgroup was forming around at the same time to take a look at the instructional framework, and Dr. Fisher began to work with our workgroup after he engaged in our Summer Leadership Academy, where he talked about assessment-capable learning. And the workgroup came together during three days in May to begin as a workgroup to talk about what we believe about teaching and learning in Mesa Public Schools and to start to draft some elements that could be a part of our framework. From there, Dr. Fisher led our principal meeting in early October and began to just really co-create with the principals this idea of the instructional framework. What is an instructional framework? What do we believe about teaching and learning? And he took that from the workgroup over to our learning meetings with principals, administrators, district leaders, and department specialists, our APs, our team leads, and our deans. We took the feedback from that October meeting and determined that some more time in the why and the what of an instructional framework was really important for our district administrators. And so from there, Dr. Fisher held meetings just last week with our school principals to really unpack that why in small group roundtable sessions. So they were hour-long sessions. He met with six groups last Tuesday and basically duplicated the work that he had done with the workgroup. So spent time unpacking that why, really getting to the root of what we believe about teaching and learning. That work will be duplicated again with our deans, our APs, our team leads, our district teaching and learning directors, and department specialists. And so we'll have a deeper opportunity to get into the why and then to use that feedback to continue to build and out that framework with multiple stakeholders as we move forward. And so this just gets into the continuum of the work as we move forward. So again, noted, November and December, more roundtable sessions, and then the co-creation and professional learning will really start to take place as we get into the spring semester of this school year. And that co-creation is really critical. That piece of the work is really about feedback loops with our administrators and ensuring that we're looking at exit ticket data, we're looking at feedback. Principals and district directors are having opportunities to talk about where we are with the framework, but also at this point, also going back to school sites and having conversations with their instructional leadership teams, with their teacher leaders, with collaborative teams, and just talking at this point about the co-creation of where we are with the instructional framework. The instructional framework is in its infancy stages. It's not built, it's not done, it's not decided nor determined. There's not one element that has like the stamp of approval yet. We really are in the storming and norming stages of figuring out what we think those essential ingredients should be. And then you'll see that in 2021 and '22 and beyond, we're really working on the learning and implementation. This is not an implementation year. We're really determining what our framework is going to look like. So with that being said, these elements here speak to what the workgroup and in our early meetings with Dr. Fisher, some words, thoughts, ideas, beliefs, principles that have surfaced and have some pattern in our conversations. And so you'll see here, feedback, which really resonates with assessment, purpose, collaboration, which you see in our Portrait of a Graduate, demonstrating, facilitating. These words right now are resonating, and we're spending time talking about what do they mean? What does that look like and sound like as our essential ingredients of instruction? And then it's really important to note that an instructional framework is interconnected. It's not linear, that they are all connected and touched, and that these pieces are ongoing in our instructional practice. And so really, one doesn't exist absent of the other, that it is a part of, all these essential ingredients need to be in the recipe for that effective, rigorous instruction to really be available for all of our students. And so as we begin to land on which of those ingredients, we're going to end up, you know, really solidifying. We'll continue to go through this process of feedback and co-creation with multiple stakeholders as we move forward until we get to a place where we land on those key ingredients. And then really want to get into, as we get close towards the end of the last couple informational slides, is really talking about how the instructional framework connects to ensure equity and strategic goal. And I know that that was touched upon earlier in our study session this evening. But an instructional framework provides a focus on the essential components of instruction and leads us to provide all students with access to high-quality instruction and results in deep learning. In our ensure equity goal, the continuum includes instructional practices that would be aligned to our instructional framework and are co-constructed with all learners so that it's rigorous, culturally relevant, and there's access for all learners. Every student in Mesa Public Schools should have access to high-quality instruction that is culturally relevant and personalized by their strengths and needs. And by defining these essential ingredients in our instructional framework, we are then able to design that rigorous, comprehensive instruction for all of our students, and it really aligns to this goal. And you'll see there, there's on the continuum, just exactly where we could then look and say, are these essential ingredients a piece of this, and then where do we need to go? And so that, I believe, leads us to questions, if I am not mistaken. All right, one click away from questions.
Mrs. Hutchinson, or I'm sorry, Mr. Peterson, did you want to start a question? Go ahead.
No, just curious. Always when you start with a blank piece of paper, you always wonder if there's some kind of a straw man or some other examples to look at to kind of give you an idea to start from. So is this literally a blank canvas, or is this more there's some examples that have learning models that entail this that you've seen? Kind of where are you at?
Yeah, I can speak a little bit to that. When Dr. Fisher first came in last summer, he actually shared a whole range of instructional models from across the nation and even across Arizona, some of the work that he's done, you know, in his speaking and consulting work. So there are best practice, research-based ingredients to instruction, and that's definitely part of the conversation. But we also want grassroots input, and so looking through the lens of the Portrait of the Graduate, we have our steering committee and stakeholders have decided that we have these essential skills and elements that we want our students to graduate ready for college career and community. And so as we look through what those ingredients are, we always want to bring it back to the Portrait of the Graduate. And then again, with our promise of meeting the needs and strengths. And so to reiterate your comment earlier, Mr. Peterson, in the study session about we want all kids to have access to AP classes, Advanced Honors coursework. If we truly have those effective instructional components within our framework and all of our design and implementation and feedback goes back to that co-creating even with students, then we truly will be personalizing learning for them, and there may not be a need for advanced courses and AP because we are meeting the needs of kids where they are and all have access to that high, rigorous, culturally relevant instruction. So blank canvas, but with research behind it and the lens of our Portrait of the Graduate, which we truly believe we want for all of our students in Mesa Public Schools.
I have a brief questions, hopefully, and then we'll turn over the time for Mrs. Sears, Mrs. Richardson, and Mrs. Hutchinson. When I listen to this, I know it is connected to the strategic plan. It was our purpose to come up with a plan, a roadmap to the graduate and what we see the graduate as looking like after graduating from Mesa Public Schools. So I've connected- So I've connected the dots. The question I have is, over the years, and I've been here and seen many years, there have been many new things, programs, ideas, professional development that teachers have had laid before them and then asked to attend. What makes this program one that they are going to want to invest in and use more energy and more of their valuable professional training time to what in it would make them want? I've lost my train of thought, but make them want?
Why do they want an instructional framework?
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
And I'll let Amy speak too. But initially, my thoughts around, you know, as you think about the design of a lesson or how to meet the needs of students. We have had many things in Mesa Public Schools. We've had many ideas and practices. And teachers receive all kinds of professional learning and engage in their own professional learning. But without that common understanding of what those components are that are going to anchor everything we do, we've got to take it back through the lens of that instructional framework. And we know that those will encompass all of our belief systems around effective instruction, but also the research, the science behind instruction. And so it will guide the strategic goal of aligning our resources. Everything will go through that lens. If there's some new fad thing, but it doesn't have the anchor or the essential ingredients of what we have designed to be in instructional framework, effective instruction, then we shouldn't be doing it. And I think that's what frustrates teachers, right? They have so many things and don't know what to pick and choose from, what's good, what's bad. This will help to align and focus us. Back to that slide of focusing our efforts on what is best effective instruction. And it won't look, it'll look different personalized to the needs of the student, but it won't limit what one child gets at one school versus access that perhaps another child has. So every child will have access to rigorous instruction.
So what I hear you saying is this is kind of a thinning process, a weeding out of things that don't apply?
Yep, let's get rid of all that other stuff, still flexible.
So that hopefully will lift some burdens because they won't be focusing on things that really aren't what we want to be focusing on, but rather laser-focused on the things that will make a difference. So their efforts will go towards something that they can see end results of. Okay, because I do feel, especially right now, teachers are very fatigued. They're overwhelmed. They're learning some new skills right now as they're going through difficult challenges. And to listen to this tonight, I wanted to make sure the message is, this isn't added to your plate. This is to simplify your plate and make sure everything you're doing has a focus and we have a bullseye that we're aiming towards so that we're not just hit and miss and doing things to improve this aspect or that aspect as we see them come across our desks or through our emails. Okay?
Absolutely.
You know, and President Minor, I would also add that the instructional framework is inclusive. Oftentimes, when you talk to a teacher, they define themselves by the program or the course that they teach. I'm an AP teacher, I'm an IB teacher, I'm a teacher of inquiry, I'm an arts integration teacher, I'm an Avid teacher, I'm a Franklin teacher. There are elements of high-quality instruction in all of those components. What we would like to see is our instructional framework is the unifier to say that tight is the instructional framework. How it shows up in IB and AP and arts integration and Avid will look a little bit different. But the unifier in Mesa Public Schools is we all understand and plan with an instructional framework across programs. So it's far more inclusive than all of this division, and it can really help us on our professional development costs.
Thank you. Mrs. Hutchinson?
Thank you, President Minor, and I really thank you for that question.
I wanted to get it before you did. So I beat you to it. So you see, I said, wait a minute.
That was truly one of the questions that I had, and particularly why this program and why now? And I think we got a pretty good answer to that. But I did have to smile when we talk about new things. And a lot of times in education, programs come around and we have different names for some of the same things that are just good practices. I couldn't help but think, as we were talking about the instructional framework, of the new thing that came in the '80s for Mesa Public Schools called the Essential Elements of Instruction and Madeline Hunter's Mastery Teaching. And those elements were essential to understanding what everybody was doing. And to hear Dr. Forless and Dr. Isless talk about this, I think it's probably time again to say, what is essential? What is it that good teachers do? Whether you're an IB teacher, an AP teacher, or a CTE teacher? What is it that is the best practices for instruction? And having that common lens, and that's why I like the use of the lens all the time. It provides us with a focus. What I, my question is, is how can we use this lens, this focus, this instructional framework to assist our teachers now during the pandemic? And I am piggybacking on a question that President Minor mentioned because frankly, our teachers are very stressed dealing with so many different issues. Trying to teach three sets of kids, the remote kids, the in-person kids, the kids who are in quarantine, different modes. It's very complicated. It's a very complex thing to be a teacher right now. To provide perhaps some essential elements might not be a bad idea. I just don't want, though, it to turn out to be, and I think this is where you were going, President Minor, just one more layer, something more on the plate. We want to declutter the plate and make sure that this is a program that they really, that teachers really do want, that there will be common understanding, that there will be an anchor. And if the instructional framework can do that, that's going to be great. But I think we need it now, and I think we need it as we teach during the pandemic. Can we apply it to the challenges that teachers are facing now? Is that possible?
Hutchinson, thank you for your comments. I, like you, would love to implement it all right now. But I think our teachers would probably murder us. But to your point?
Oh, I would agree. I would agree. I'm thinking, though, at an administrative level, are there ways in which we can provide resources, tools, that will help the teachers? We don't want to put any more on their plate. Oh, absolutely. I am in total agreement with you.
Absolutely. And, you know, to your point, as you saw, one of those essential ingredients that kept coming up was feedback. And so as we think about feedback, what does that mean? What does that look like? What does that sound like? Some people will have a visual image right now of assessment. And even when we say the word "assessment," they think about state testing. Whereas another person may think about assessment as formative assessment and something that a teacher does in exit ticket or even having a conversation with a student. So as far as implementation, again, the framework isn't a program. It's the, like you said, the essential elements of instruction. Some of our teachers wouldn't know what that means. That is an instructional framework. And it's an instructional framework we implemented a long time ago. And some of those pieces are still true, and they're showing up in our draft of where we're at right now. So if we take that component or that ingredient of feedback, that's definitely something that we can apply right now and continue to provide professional learning and support. Teachers are already coming out. You can follow their feeds, their ideas, our department chair meetings. They talk about what does feedback look like in person? What does feedback look like in a remote situation? And for some of our folks who are doing that dual modality, how do we provide feedback to each and every one of those students regardless of the learning model that they're in? So certainly, those are some conversations and things that we've already started in many of our administrative learning meetings that they can take right back to their schools and get voices. We, Dr. Mallorwine and I had a meeting last month with a group of teachers around some of the practices that they're using. What does that look like in terms of feedback, for example? It's one of those essential ingredients. And then replicating that and sharing that with other teachers.
That's terrific because I know that teachers right now are trying to do their best. They're trying to do their very best. And yet, they feel like they're not able to meet the needs of the students that they care deeply about because they are trying to do so much in so little time. And I'm glad to hear that you can take a principal-like feedback, you know, like specific and immediate feedback, and that there is the dialogue to help teachers provide that in many modalities and that principals are aware and that teachers, maybe that November 30th date, that they can talk about ways in which they've been successful in providing feedback to their students, whether they're remote or in-person or the kid that's quarantined. And that we have, that it creates an opportunity with a common language, much like we're talking about with our work on equity, that it will open up collaboration and allow teachers to share good teaching practices if they have this common framework, if they have this common language. And that will ease some of the stress. And I'm, but I'm just so glad to hear some of it is already being applied because I think our teachers really, really, really need some help. But really, just the basic principle of collaboration so as to prevent the stress.
Absolutely. And you could see that collaboration was another key ingredient that popped up in that framework. And so again, to apply your example of collaboration, what is, how does the use of WebEx help teachers with collaboration between departments, between grade levels, but also within our student groups? How do the breakout rooms help with collaboration, whether they're in remote or in-person learning? And so teachers are already sharing some of those best practices. We've got WebEx chats that teachers and leaders are constantly collaborating just among, from adult to adult. And then what are those practices that they use from student to student or small group to small group and so forth? So definitely, we'll continue to utilize the voices of our teachers who have figured out a lot of things in a short time and then also things that we're gathering, not only within our own district but across the state and the nation around the practices that are happening right now.
Yeah, and I will add that the timeliness of this work with Dr. Fisher, as he's in another state also doing distance learning, has allowed us to have a thought partner to talk about what's working and what's not working. And he has done a really nice job in the learning meetings of just giving some bite-sized pieces that can be applicable right now. And I will tell you that there is momentum on some of those conversations. And I know based on conversations that I've had with school leaders and those working on Professional Learning for Monday, they're using those bite-sized pieces on the 30th. And they do have to do with feedback. There's a strategy called Talk Back that he modeled, and I know schools are using it and talking about it. And so there has been some great partnership and ability to look at learning in other places that we can then immediately just have dialogue about. That's been really timely for our own professional learning in this process and look at some good research-based practices that are coming out of the current situation that we're in. And then from the professional learning lens, really trying, once we get what these essential ingredients are, to come underneath and put together multiple different opportunities for professional learning that can be taken, you know, at their own pace, when they desire so that if any staff member says, "I really need to know more about collaboration outside of what's been shared," that will be available to them so that it can be applicable and they're not waiting for some group professional learning experience, you know, months down the road. So we're trying to be thoughtful in how we also build underneath this work to support the learning of all stakeholders.
Thanks much.
Thank you, Mrs. Hutchinson. Mrs. Richardson, do you want to go next? Oh, good. And Mrs. Sears, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do have some questions in the framework. Because the last segment of it, you talked about the ensure equity goal. And as I'm putting this together as we do, and I listened to, for remember, Hutchinson, the whole time I was hearing the same questions that she asked, very much applicable to equity being implied at these times. So not being a person who's an educator every day, but I know with frameworks, and you talked about the frameworks, I kind of looked into this, I can get some better understanding. And you have like an equity-based instructional framework, and you have all of these different things. And so when we're talking about the lens, I'm hearing the Portrait of the Graduate being basically a part. Then we said, okay, using, then we showed this, using this as a lens. So one lens looks like it looks into the other and kind of down the way, kind of like a telescope. So the more that I look at all of this and what we're doing, and of course, I've stepped back and said, okay, when we have all of these different things we're talking about, and one thing that I've said is that almost all of everything we do and the practices, we don't want equity in a corner. So this is talking about equity going throughout it. But I also see equity as being a lens. So what I was doing right now is putting all of these things in the think tank and looking at what this says to me. So now that we have a framework that we're talking about and in this framework and these things, we're making sure that we have, I think specifically what you said, was cultural things in this, but ensuring that we have that. So it more and more seems to me that above all of this is actually having some way or some set aside situation where equity is the lens with the tools that we're actually doing. And that's overriding these different things. So hence, pulling the string through is one way of looking at it. But I'm also looking at that lens being basically looked at with anything that we have. So in one way, I heard Ms. Isless saying that we'll make sure in it that we have some ensuring equity. And when I think about that, again, I'm thinking about equitable situations when it comes to our staffing model, when it comes to the actual challenging time where we have. Because we have several different things going on at the different schools and every community is impacted a little differently. So when we're looking at COVID, like actually having a set aside where that somebody's just looking at it, are we doing this equitably when it comes to the treatment of all our staff members, our teachers? You know, some places may be more stressed just given what the dimensions are. So my question in saying all of that is kind of reversing it, or is it semantics? Or do you, and this is probably more for Tracy, do you hear what I'm saying? Or is like looking at the frameworks and the different, I guess you could say, type of frameworks that we say? And whether it, we have an overriding principle of having that equity-based things when it comes to instructional, this instructional framework?
I think I understand what you're saying, and I'll try to connect some examples. And so And so, when we think about equity in curriculum, do all of our students have access to the essential ingredients of an effective curriculum? And you're right that, you know, one student or one community may need different practices or different treatments or different resources based on, on their needs and strengths. There will be an anchor or some components that we want to ensure every child has first. And then, if they need more, we provide more. If they need less, we accelerate. If we, we take, we look through the lens of, of equity in ensuring that every child has what they need in regard to those resources, the curriculum. Maybe they need more access to a counselor. Whatever those things are that a student or a school needs, the framework provides the baseline based on our beliefs about equity, about effective instruction. And then, the treatments or the resources or staffing, whatever that is, is, is applied as needed to each school or site. I'm hoping that answers your question. But you're, I, I think definitely you're right on track. As we, as we think about the lens that we're focusing that telescope or that, that tool on, these will be defined by what, what our teachers and leaders and our students feel should be those essential ingredients of instruction. And that every child, no matter whether I go to Westwood High School, Skyline High School, Red Mountain High School and so forth, I, I can receive access to those essential ingredients. They might be personalized to my needs or my pathways or what my community believes to be important, but those essential ingredients are first and foremost provided to all students.
Get your question answered, Mrs. Okay?
I, from there, I guess it comes back to, after listening to, after Eastless is what we're, I guess, slowly working to define and putting together. And I think our task force is working on in terms of those, the basis of those beliefs is a big thing that we're working on and having a baseline and a framework to start with, with that. So, I guess, I'll wait to hear more.
Thank you, Mrs. Sears. If there isn't any more questions or comments to this item, now's your last chance. I'm looking at your faces, Mrs. Hutchinson, Mrs. Sears, everyone here. Then we are going to get, there are six people who would like to speak to the public, call to the public. So, we will move on to that item if we are, if we are finished here. Is that, thank you, Dr. Eastless. Okay. I will not go through the procedures because we mentioned, I will just briefly mention that it's three minutes. Mrs. Head over there will give you a one-minute. Is it there? Because I didn't see it. Okay, so it was behind me. It wasn't in front of me. I was, kept looking. So, great. It's on the, so you can see it on the screen. All right. And then, I will give the person who comes up next the chance to be prepared for when their time is up. So, I will announce the person who follows the one who's speaking at the time. And we will begin with, let's see, John Romeo? Oh, I'm sorry, Romero. I've got to get closer to my screen. John Romero. And following John Romero is Joshua Buckley.
President Minor, Superintendent Forless, members of the board. My name is John Romero. I am an environmental science teacher at Red Mountain High School. I'm speaking to you first as a parent of an MPS eighth grader, second as a teacher, MPS teacher, and third, because according to my wife, who is also an MPS employee, I can't keep my mouth shut. So, I'll make my remarks brief. I've been fortunate enough to work in two dream careers in my lifetime. The first was law enforcement. The second was teaching high school science. It is a passion that I can compare to very few things in my life. Part of that passion comes from the teachers I work with. The energy that emanates from these teachers is inspiring. They are dedicated, honorable, and courageous professionals. As an old man but a young teacher, I look to many of these teachers for advice and am never told no. They all possess a radiance fueled by their love for their students and their, and their profession. I count myself extremely fortunate to be part of such a group. Lately, however, the radiance is dimmed, smiles are more scarce, and passion is being eroded by doses of fear. These observations have brought, have brought me to this podium to present information to you from the trenches. My fellow teachers and I all have varying years of experience. This experience has been tested by models of instructions few, few of us have ever encountered. We do this in environments that have the potential to expose us all to infection every day. Many of us take care of at-risk relatives at home and are at risk ourselves. We accept these risks because our ultimate goal is the education of our students. We see the cues increase on our synergy screens and the emails notifying of positive tests becoming more frequent. It weighs heavy on our hearts. Please understand, it's not my place to demand we go to hybrid or remote learning models. My son still has not dug himself out of that assignment hole yet. I am confident, however, that the data will drive that decision to fruition very soon. I do ask that you take my comments into consideration when making future decisions on this issue. I appreciate the data-driven decisions that Superintendents Forless and Williams are using to inform the teachers and parents and to evaluate and implement specific learning models. This is a massive undertaking and is being done in a difficult and sometimes hostile environment. I also thank the board for giving the superintendency autonomy to make these decisions. As teachers, we will always improvise, adapt, and overcome. We just ask that we be given the opportunity to do these things in a safe environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Joshua Buckley, and following Joshua is Judy Robbins.
Hey, everybody. President Minor, governing board members, superintendency. As you know, I've made a promise, just like the rest of you, to continually share those concerns I hear from educators whenever I can be at a governing board meeting. Yesterday, you received over 160 comments and concerns from educators across the district. And today, I've emailed a document with over 100 more. Although there are some varying opinions and ideas, a vast majority of them come from teachers worried about the health and safety of their students, their communities, and their families and themselves. When decisions were made to return to in-person learning in both, in both in-person learning and the AB model and what we have five days a week now, I often ask for folks to look at the metrics. We had some positive trends that allowed us to return in person, and this board often spoke of the data being two weeks old and how that was helping you move the process faster for our return, looking ahead at that data. Now, we see a continual trend of more cases and a higher percent positivity. I can only ask folks to do the same thing now. What is the data in Arizona telling us? What is the data in Maricopa County telling us? What is the data in Mesa telling us? Is it telling us that five days a week with students close together in classrooms is the right decision? Is it telling us that over 2,000 kids in the hallway every 52 minutes is the right decision? I believe that we would not have opened schools to five days a week in person had this data been facing us then. Large, comprehensive high schools are seeing cases tick up in both staff and students. And as we've seen on elementary campuses, it does not take many staff cases to close a school or quarantine a class. From hearing educators speak tonight and from the comments and the documents I shared with you, many share that they believe using the data as we are now, looking at a single campus at a time, means we're waiting for enough people to get sick on that campus before we do something. Educators have been asked, educators have asked if we're going to wait for campuses to be forced to be closed when too many students and staff become sick? Or can we take some steps to further limit the exposure of students and staff on campuses now? Over the Thanksgiving break, I, like many other staff, will be waiting for benchmark data to come out from the county. But we won't know what that means for our campuses or our district. We're pretty sure that the percent positivity will be higher. We're pretty sure a case count will go up. And we're pretty sure that when we return, we'll see more cases on campuses and other campuses across Mesa. The decisions ahead of us can be proactive or reactive. The voices in the comments I shared with you today and yesterday are asking for proactive decisions. They're asking for some clarity. They're asking for if A happens, then we'll do B. Thank you.
Thank you, Joshua. Okay, Judy, and then Kelly Berg.
Good evening, President Minor and Superintendent Forless and governing board members. My name is Judy Robbins. I'm an itinerant special ed teacher for the district. I work with deaf and hard-of-hearing students. Yesterday, 5,454 Arizona residents have been diagnosed with COVID-19, the second highest numbers since the state has started collecting the data. As reported on Channel 12 News today, Banner Hospitals are anticipating their ICUs are going to be at 125% overcapacity within the next few weeks. I received notification that another five high school students tested positive in one of the 14 schools I serve in. And now, there are increased daily updates of schools having students and staff testing positive. Adding to this tragic situation, the greater Mesa community is hosting larger superspreader events for Mesa students that are not likely abiding by social distancing, masking, and limits to the number of people gathering. The community spread is accelerating, and some school districts in the Maricopa County are heeding the danger. But so far, the messaging I see in Mesa is to stay the course and remain open. I believe our school's slow approach is rapidly increasing infection rates and contributing to the community's spread. It's folly to think that our mitigation strategies are effective enough to control four COVID-19 infections because we are not in control. The virus is, however, and it is, has a stranglehold on our community. So, so much so that our students and staff are likely bringing the COVID coronavirus into our schools and classroom, and it's being spread quickly. There have been quadrupled the active cases since we have opened five-day in-person learning. Some action is needed quickly. I believe the Mesa Public School Board could take decisive actions to go back to virtual-only model while our county and our entire school district is experiencing metrics in the red. I think we have a greater role to play helping with reducing the numbers towards bending the tip of the spear to ensure our first-line responders and healthcare workers are not overwhelmed and overtaxed with record-setting new cases. I urge you to refocus the criteria based on two out of the three existing metrics, that of the numbers of cases per thousand, 100,000 people and percent positivity. The recent adoption of aligning all three metrics in red before taking action is risking increasing the COVID-19 positive cases and endangering more and more within our schools and our students' homes and for the greater community. Our teachers are unduly burdened and burned out with the remote and in-person teaching.
Thank you.
I urge you to take action as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mel Wood, and following Mel Wood is Christina Bustos? Bustos? Bustos. Kelly Berg, yes. Kelly?
That's okay. We got you. Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Forless. I'm Kelly Berg, math teacher and OIDC for Canvas at Dobson and Vice President of MEA. I'm a single parent of four sons, a sophomore at Dobson, an eighth grader at Summit Academy, and twins in fourth grade at Summit Academy. I live in the Dobson High area, and I'm invested in my community. The metrics and the lack of a clear plan when to move to remote learning is very concerning to me. As a math teacher and a former AP statistics teacher, the data is concerning. You have pleaded with our community to stay vigilant with mitigation strategies for COVID. We are trending in the wrong direction. We need movement toward AB days or toward remote learning, or at least to know the criteria without so many shifting parts. While the virus cases are rising, you state we are not seeing a spread on campus. But when we will see a spread on campuses, it will be too late. Thank you for the movement, movement on increasing the subpay. We are desperate for substitute teachers again. Today, I had to substitute during my prep hour to cover a teacher who was out. I don't know if the teacher has COVID. I sat in their room today worried that if this teacher does have it, I may be in contact with it while in their room. Sure, I had my mask on and used the hand sanitizer in the room. But I feel I may have put myself and my family at risk. I went outside of my bubble of people today. What if that teacher does have COVID and passed it on to one of their students who was in the room today? The district says it's not spreading on campus. It hasn't so far, but it will. Will it start with me? Will it start with the next class I have to sub in? We need to know that our district has our teachers' backs. I need to know that the district is not waiting until spread is rampant before moving to a different schedule. I need to feel safe when I go to work, so I can feel safe when I come home to my children and to my mother who watches them while I teach in person. I am asking you set trigger points in the data. If we hit two red metrics, we need to be at least back to AB days. If we hit two red metrics for two weeks in a row, we need to return to remote learning until it's safe by metrics to return. One reason we were given in October to return to modified in-person was we need to return because our surrounding districts have returned. MCC will be remote for the spring semester. Schools in Apache Junction are remote until mid-January. Gilbert Public Schools will go remote learning when they hit two red metrics. Let's be a leader again in the East Valley. We cannot continue to run our schools in the red. To continue with the kitchen analogy, right now, it feels like if teachers are preparing for a wedding banquet on a hot plate and a microwave. I'm wearing a bracelet today that says, "Believe." I believe that you will make the right decision.
Thank you. Mel Wood, and then Christina.
Thank you for allowing us to come in, be a part of this meeting, and to give our comments. I am a mother of five Mesa Public School students. That includes a high schooler, one in junior high, a third grader, and twin kindergartners. I especially applaud Mesa Public Schools for the unique approach of not using the blanket closing of schools. This is an incredible gift to the students, especially the younger ones. I am grateful that a football team across town, oh, I'm sorry, a sports team. I didn't mean to. That high schoolers who keep jobs and run sports are not affecting my third grader's education with an IEP. I am thrilled that you are looking case by case and school by school because according to our own metrics, there's only 17 cases on the 10 junior high campuses. That's over 9,500 people. Those numbers are amazing. There are 46 elementary schools with two cases or fewer per campus. Your safe, strong, and ready is working, and we are thrilled to have our schools open. I was especially grateful to see that you will close schools as needed, that you are looking at the numbers, and when certain things happen, you are responding appropriately. In my house, I have a high school freshman who can flow easily back and forth between in-person and virtual learning. She is not the concern. My seventh grader was so bombarded and overwhelmed with six online classes at the beginning. She lost sleep, changed her mood, grades suffered, learning tanked, and she's only 12 years old. She still attends weekly mass tutoring in-person to try to catch up from the last quarter. And we're grateful that her school, that has only a handful of cases, can be open. My sweet third grader is the real concern. He has an IEP. He needs in-person learning. His response to online learning was complete withdrawal. No interaction, no learning. He is the type of person that cannot be served in the other way. However, if the numbers said so, we would do everything we could. But I'm grateful his school, that- said so, we would do everything we could. But I'm grateful his school, that has zero cases, can be open. This is such a gift to the students of Mesa. Lastly, I have twins in kindergarten. Even though they were assigned a wonderful, dynamic season teacher, she could only hold their attention about 20 minutes online. I'm not actually concerned about them. They have time to catch up, and they have a good base, but there's so many other students that will fall through the crack. On a personal note, as a nurse in the community, right here in a hospital, right here in Mesa, I understand having to change. I understand being worried. I understand having concerns over personal and family safety. I 100% acknowledge the virus and have seen its effect on people, and I applaud those who help the community run.
Thank you. And Christina is our final speaker today, or public comment.
Hello, President Minor, governing board superintendent. My name is Christina Bustos. I am currently a remote teacher and the mother of a preschooler in remote Montessori. I would like to acknowledge the indigenous land we are standing on and ask that we honor the Akimal Oodam and Phiposh Indian communities. First, before I forget, I would like to say that when we are looking at the curriculum framework and our focus is on equity, we need more teachers and administrators of color, because all kids benefit from them. Next, in two days' time, we may gather virtually or in person to celebrate the time when the pilgrims or colonists celebrated the land of a long hard winter on the new land and created a treaty with the Wampanoag, and they shared a meal in celebration of this agreement. And in that moment, in that moment, we can say that they cared about each other. This is also a time for many indigenous people to mourn the loss of their ancestors to treaties broken, to war with weapons they had never known, and epidemics that they had not seen the likes of before. What has happened to our indigenous communities in Arizona at the beginning of COVID is unforgivable this past year, and I would like to also acknowledge their loss at this time. Many of our students of all races, but specifically indigenous, black and Latinx, specifically our black indigenous and Latinx students are currently remote, because that is where they feel safe. Others are back at school because their families are essential workers. Every decision for the family is, I am sure, very difficult, but we made agreements to keep our students safe. I am asking you, district administration, to help us as teachers, confused, hopeless, and scared. We need to be remote for the next three weeks, so that, at least, so that we as a community can care for each other and get the spread to slow, because we as a community agreed to care for each other. In closing, I would like to share an ancient line saying in Laketch, "Tu eres mi otro yo." You are my other me. Si te hago daño a ti, if I do harm to you, me hago daño a mí mismo. I do harm to myself. Si te amo y respeto, if I love and respect you, me amo y respeto yo. I love and respect myself. Thank you.
Thank you. As that concludes our call to the public, I just want to first turn the time over to Dr. Forless to see if she had any final comments before we close for the evening.
Thank you, President Minor. As I'm listening and taking notes to all of the messaging of today, I know that no decisions are easy right now. Every day that I come to work, I feel like I make the best of a terrible decision. And we are studying every ounce of the data to make the very best decisions for our kids as we possibly can. So thank you for sharing your thoughts, your comments. They do not fall on deaf ears. We will continue to talk about what, what is the best for Mesa Public Schools and what is best for each individual school inside of Mesa Public Schools. There was a lot of great information that was shared this evening related not only to the public health metrics, but providing a path forward of what our district is committed to, and that is committed to ensuring equity and providing high-quality instruction for all of our kids while taking care of the social, emotional needs of both our staff and our students. So I just want to say thank you to those of you who stuck with this all night to share your thinking, and for those that came to present with us this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Forless. With that, do I have a motion for adjournment?
The move that we adjourn this meeting?
Thank you, Mrs. Richardson, and second?
Kiana Sears, seconds.
Thank you, Mrs. Sears, and now for the vote. Thank you, everyone. Please have a wonderful and safe Thanksgiving, and we hope to see you in a couple of weeks, and, and have a good evening.